Hi, everybody. Calling the meeting to order. This is the November 15th, 2022, regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education. I'm Kristi Vitale, the chair. I'm joined tonight by Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, Superintendent Testani, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Kelly, and Mr. Asam, Mrs. Maxicinelli, joining us shortly. Ask you to all, please, rise for the pledge. And Mr. Testani, will you do us the honor in leading us on the pledge? Welcome, everyone, and welcome, Mr. Testani. For those of you who have not heard, we have a new superintendent of schools, Mr. Michael Testani. His first day was November 1st, but he has been visiting the district prior to that and has been busy at work. It's hard to believe that it's only been two weeks. But we're happy that you're here and we're looking forward to working with you and getting started. We have a very full agenda tonight. I'm going to ask for the board's unanimous consent to move the PTA recognition forward above the student reports and public comment. I'm a little concerned just about fire code, and I know we have some of our PTA presidents here, and we'd like to recognize them, and then you can get home to your families if you so choose. So any objection to just that change in the agenda order? Okay, seeing none. So we're going to move on. We view our PTAs as valuable resources for our school district. And many of us on the board started as Board of Ed representatives to the PTA reps for the Board of Ed and have served in leadership positions. Some of us still are on executive boards of PTAs. The PTA mission, "Every Child, One Voice", is something that I think that many of us bring, that sentiment to the work that we do as Board of Education members. We are so thankful to our parent volunteers and our teacher volunteers for all the work they do throughout the year to enrich our schools and strengthen the homeschool relationship. We view you as our partners, and we appreciate all the wonderful things that you do, from teacher appreciation to student events to special programming, to bingo nights, to walk-a-thons, to helping plan high school proms and teacher appreciation events. We couldn't do it without you. We want to take this moment to publicly recognize you. So I'm going to ask any PTA presidents or Board of Ed reps that are with us tonight to please stand up, come forward to the mic, and just introduce yourselves. Tell us your position with your PTA and what school you are with. And then just remain standing over here so we can get a picture of everybody. Katie, why don't you go first?
Hi, I am Katie Flynn, the Fairfield PTA Council President, and, as I say about every month, the current North Stratfield president. But we should have a new one, hopefully, by January. So thank you all for your steady commitment and partnership with our PTAs. I can tell you, as an active PTA parent and former Board of Ed rep, the work with you all is invaluable. So thank you for your time and your energy.
Thank you. Mary Lupo, PTA co-president at Holland Hill.
Hi, everyone. I'm Megan Crystal, Holland Hill co-PTA president with Mary Lupo.
Good evening. I'm Ellie Fatahi, and I am the co-president with Mill Hill Elementary School.
Hello, my name is Lisa Alberts. I am also the co-president at Mill Hill Elementary School.
Hi, I'm Michelle Walker. I am the BOE rep from McKinley School.
Hi there. I am Erin Kleinman, and I'm the president of the Roger Ludlow Middle School PTA. I wish I had a co-president. That would be awesome.
Hi, how are you? I'm Ruchi Kapoor. I'm the PTAC representative from Jennings School. Thank you for having us here.
Hi, I'm Kristi Vitale. I am the president of the Special Education PTA, and I have lots of thanks for everyone here for everything that you do, and also to all of the PTA presidents who work to support all of our special education students across the district. Thank you.
Sean Hood, Roger Sherman PTA. And I'd say thank you for recognizing us and let us unleash our power. Let us do more, is what I would say. Thank you.
Sorry. Laura Lefredo, PTA co-president at Dwight.
Hi, Jonna Hoffman, co-PTA president at Dwight. And let's save Dwight.
David Krosnov, Board of Ed rep, Dwight.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Lewis, and I'm the PTA president at Stratfield Elementary School.
All right. So trying to think of photo op. It might be hard. Maybe you guys should come and just line the inside horseshoe. Mr. Testani, can you please join our PTA presidents for a picture? And I'm going to join you guys, too, because I am past PTA president myself. You know, feel a special kinship to you all for the work that you do. Thank you all for coming out. And I also want to thank Mrs. Gerber, who is our PTA Council representative and also communicates with our PTA presidents throughout the year. If any PTA presidents have not had a board member come and visit your PTA, please reach out to Mrs. Gerber, and we'll schedule a visit. And thank you to those board members who have already taken the time to meet with PTAs this year. Okay, we're moving on to student reports. We'll start with Fairfield Ludlow High School.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Annika Martins. I'm a senior at Ludlow. Glad to be here on this chilly November evening. I just want to first say a hearty welcome on behalf of all Ludlow students to Mr. Testani, our new superintendent. And on behalf of all Fairfield students, we eagerly await a, hopefully generous, snow day policy. On a more serious note, last Thursday, Ludlow's music department put on a concert celebrating our veterans by performing the official song of each branch of the Armed Forces. State Senator Tony Huang was in the audience, and we were delighted to host him. And we are very grateful to our veterans and active military personnel who put their lives on the line for our protection every day. We also want to thank the American Legion's Lieutenant Owen Fish Memorial Post for attending and presenting the color guard. Also, last week, on Monday, Dr. Alicia Farrell came to Ludlow to speak about coping with stress, building resilience, and helping teach us to make better decisions, especially because we are going, as seniors, to make college and career decisions that make long-term impacts. In speaking with my peers, I know that her speech really resonated with us, and we took a lot of her messages to heart. Ludlow's Key Club has been running a food drive that I mentioned last meeting, and we collected over 1,200 pounds of food to donate to the Bridgeport Rescue Mission's Thanksgiving Food Drive. A huge thank you to Ms. Brown and the Key Club members. I know it was really impressive to see these massive boxes of food for donation. Terms of student journalism, Ludlow's journalism classes and a number of editors from The Prospect, which is our school newspaper, attended the Columbia University Scholastic Press Association's conference on Columbia's campus in New York, and we enjoyed a full day of informational sessions with journalists at Columbia, professors, and networking with other student journalists in the greater New York area. And ahead of last week's election, a number of journalists in our journalism class created fact-check sheets on the gubernatorial candidates, which we posted to the Ludlow Twitter and The Prospect. Everybody, follow the Twitter and read The Prospect.
Hi, I'm Agatha. I'm a junior, and I'm also really excited to have a permanent superintendent and very, very much looking forward to those very generous snow day setting ups. And to speak right, nobody wants to go out in the cold. For the mental health assembly, I'd just like to speak to that because if you were wondering, the secret is math. That literally, yeah, the secret is math. That was a fun part of our assembly, to activate not our, to activate our prefrontal cortex and not think so much with our emotions. It was very interesting talk that incorporated some things we could really relate to. And very exciting homecoming this Friday. Ludlow will celebrate homecoming in the cafeteria, an event that juniors are allowed to come to this time. We've been bullied off of it for as long as anyone can remember, and we are allowed to go this time. So we're very excited. And we also have intramurals this year. Intramural sports have returned as a relaxed way to enjoy some athletics with friends. Students can enjoy volleyball, badminton, and yoga in the evenings after school. Intermittents have no cuts or tryouts, which creates a sense of community. Personally, I'm going to go for yoga. Seems like an awesome thing to participate in. We also have best buddies. A new chapter of, I did it at Ludlow last week, courtesy of Mrs. Sultan, I apologize, Sultan Reach. We're very excited about that. And then we also have Alumni Day. It's always the best part of the year. You have, it's very exciting, you know, the little interruption in your classes, and you just see all these people. Teachers get very excited about that. I know they get really happy. And it's next Wednesday, November 23rd, and we invite all graduated students from the class of 2022 and previous years to meet their old teachers and their high school friends during Thanksgiving break. And we also have swimming. Congratulations to Ella Guster for coming first in the FCIAC Swimming Championship, 100 Backstroke Race, and to Katie Murray for winning the 200 free at FCIACS. And we also have, we also had sign language at our play, which Annika mentioned, on the Saturday night. There were sign language interpreters on all sides of the theater, acting out the lines and actions of the play. We are very grateful to Mrs. Allers, our ASL teacher, for arranging this, and want to shout out Mrs. Gunster's, Gertse's son, Aiden, who is Annika's friend for his lead role in the play. Also, Youth for Equity Club did an informational session on International Indigenous Peoples' Day, which was awesome. And Asian Club did about a week-long bake sale at the beginning and at the end of school. And it was, it was very, very fun. People were very excited about it, to try new foods. And Falcon Council will be hosting a gingerbread house-building contest during the winter areas. We're very excited that our student government is starting to implement a lot of new ways to get involved with the community. So that's something to look forward to. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving on to Fairfield Ward.
Hi, my name is Ida. I'm a senior, and I'm honored to be representing Fairfield Ward tonight. We're excited to welcome Mr. Testani to our virtual PTA meeting this Wednesday at 6:30 PM, where he will answer questions from our families. We're also honored to announce that this Thursday, Mr. Troutwine will be presenting his positive-will presentation to our juniors and seniors in our auditorium while the freshmen and sophomores watch the live stream in homeroom. This presentation will talk about raising awareness of teen suicide and the challenges adolescents face in today's society. Also on Thursday, the athletic departments from both high schools are holding a recruiting seminar with Wayne Mazzoni at 7:00 PM in the Ward Auditorium for students and families who are interested in learning more about the recruiting process. It's free of cost and a great opportunity. And we also have Ward's first annual Powderpuff Flag Football Game that will take place this Friday at 5:30 PM on the turf. We've been having practices every day this week, and I am proudly the senior girls' wide receiver one, and I am getting ready to dominate against the juniors. And it's also great because all the proceeds from this will go to the class of 2022, or 2023 and 24. Next, the Ward Drama Club will be performing a Midsummer's Night Dream in the Black Box Theater this Friday and Saturday at 8:00 PM and Sunday at 2:00 PM. We encourage you all to come out to support the outstanding performers who have been working so very hard. Also, yesterday, we hosted Best Buddies Friendsgiving, which is sort of a potluck situation where everyone brings a dish to share. And it's definitely my favorite event of the year. I'm co-president of the club. And we haven't had one since 2019, so since when I was a freshman. But it was very successful, and we had over 100 people show up in multiple schools from around Connecticut. And we even got to welcome the new Ludlow Best Buddies Chapter. The CIC also acknowledged the Fairfield Ward Athletic Program's patriotism in a video supporting Veterans Day. The video spoke of how all the athletic teams practicing, notably football, stopped and turned to the flag for the Star Spangled Banner during a FCX soccer playoff game. It's a heartwarming video that's featured on our Instagram. Lastly, the CIC also recognized our own Ryan Malika of Fairfield Ward Golf in an act of honesty and sportsmanship during the FCX Golf Championship, in which he self-reported playing the wrong ball, which resulted in him being disqualified from the match. We believe that Ryan was acting as a true Mustang, and we are very proud of him. Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving.
Do board members have any questions for our student representatives? Mr. Peterson?
Actually, just have a comment on the agenda. I'd like to point out, for the record, that while my honored ancestor did not spell his name with a tailing E, our school is spelled W-A-R-D-E.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any questions for our students? And we are not going to have a board meeting before Thanksgiving. So football, Thanksgiving morning, it's at Ludlow this year, correct? 10, what time, 10:30? 10:30, just putting out there for the board and for members of the public. If someone's looking for something to do, Thanksgiving morning, I encourage you to go out. It's a, it's a great event. Lots of people from all over town, all ages, come together to cheer on our two schools. So two schools, one town for that morning. Thank you for your reports, and you are welcome to stay. But it is raining out, and I appreciate you probably have things to do. So you are more than welcome to take your leave if you so choose. And we look forward to seeing you at the end of the month, and have a very happy Thanksgiving. Okay, we're moving on to public comment. We have a full room tonight. Can I just have a show of hands by how many people are planning on coming and giving comment? Okay. We have a very full agenda tonight. Usually, we give three minutes per person, but we want to give everyone an opportunity to speak. So if there's no objection from the board, I'm going to shorten it to two minutes per speaker tonight, so everybody has a chance, and we have an opportunity to, you know, get through our agenda. Just for the public, there is public comment also at the end of the meeting, so you can give comment now on agenda items or at the end of the meeting. If you're here to give comment on any of the voting items, we also take public comment before any action items. We ask that you refrain from addressing specific personnel issues during public comment, and please give your name and address for the record. If any children are speaking, you do not need to give their addresses. We want to respect our children's privacy. And with that, I invite the first speaker to come up. And you need to hold the button on the mic and keep holding it while you're talking.
Hi, my name is Sunila Fadel. I live on Fencer Road Drive in Fairfield. It is an honor to be here today. I'm here on behalf of the Muslim, Fairfield Muslim community and allies, and of course, my children. Diversity in Fairfield continues to grow every year, and that is something I think we can take pride in. The Muslim community in particular has continued to flourish, as we can see from the people here tonight. As with many communities, our faith is an integral part of our identity. We have two holy days that we celebrate in a year, including Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Adha. Eid al-Fitr is our celebration with family and friends after the holy month of Ramadan, where we fast from sunrise to sunset. Eid al-Adha is about family and sacrifice. Today, we are here to ask you to recognize these days on the calendar and also provide Eid al-Fitr off as a school holiday. With the Muslim community continuing to grow with approximately 500 to 600 students in Fairfield, we feel this is the right time to advocate for this initiative. Every year, families are forced to make the difficult decision whether to celebrate their holiday or go to school so as not to miss important work. Many other towns in Connecticut have embraced Eid al-Fitr holiday, and the number continues to grow. This initiative will not only help one particular group, but the community as a whole. We will attract diverse teachers and school staff as well as businesses to Fairfield. As you know, we struggle with teacher shortages, staffing, bus issues, and empty storefronts across town. We understand the operational and administrative constraints of the school calendar, but also ask you take into consideration the long-term benefits to students, parents, and the broader community. Based on 2022 data pulled by the Board of Education, 239 students were absent for religious observance of Eid al-Fitr. And that's only those that reported it as a religious absence, and does not include those that chose to come in so as not to fall behind. On that note, we believe that students are also an important part of the operational equation, just like teachers.
That was time. Thank you. I'm going to ask that you please just hold applause after public comment. We don't want to give, you know, people who give comment and don't get applause, we just don't usually have that as part of our meeting. I appreciate that everybody, and I think the speakers appreciate everyone's support. But I just ask you to please refrain from clapping. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Inayi Seal, and I'm a fifth grader at Stratfield Elementary School. And I'm also on the Stratfield Student Leadership Team. I'm here tonight with my family, friends, and neighbors to request the holiday of Eid off and add it to the calendar. My friends ask me, "You don't celebrate Christmas or Yom Kippur. What do you celebrate?" I celebrate Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Adha, and they usually have no clue what it is. I explain to them, like I do every year, that Eid al-Fitr is a celebration at the end of Ramadan, where my family, relatives, and friends in the community start with prayer at the mosque in the morning, followed by meeting a relative, gift-exchanging, and a big lunch with the family. I hope you consider adding the Eid holidays to the calendar so my friends and teachers know about my holiday just like I know about their holidays. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Leila Hassan, and I go to McKinley Elementary School in Fairfield. I am 10, almost 11. And personally, the reason why Eid should have a day off is whenever it's the day before Eid, I have to tell the teacher, "Hey, I'm not going to be able to go to school tomorrow. I'm not going to be able to go." But I really shouldn't have to say that. I should be thinking how much fun I am going to have on Eid al-Fitr instead of worrying how I'm going to catch up on these lessons or test the day after. And I, and many others who I know would love to be here, feel very left out because of this. And there are lots of boys and girls who I know will appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Perry Saman, and I go to McKinley School in Fairfield. I'm in third grade, and my friends have been questioning me and asking me, "What is Eid?" So I explain to them enthusiastically, "Eid is a celebration I celebrate after Ramadan. We celebrate it with our family and friends. We do this to celebrate how long we have been fasting." After I finished, they listened, but they're still puzzled. So sometimes I feel very different because I celebrate this, but I'm not. Then I think, "Why do holly holidays that are mostly known gotten off, even though the people who don't celebrate get a holiday off? Well, I'm, and not only me, but others have holidays we want to take off, but we can't. But it depends on the school district and answer." So if, say... So if they say yes, we go out and have fun, but we still miss a class. And I don't think it's fair for the more known holidays, you get a day off and you don't miss any exams or tests. But in unusual holidays that many people don't know, you don't miss any exams or tests. All holidays are the same. They are equal, so each should be a day off for fairness. I trust your fairness, and I'm sure you will let us feel that we live in one country with equality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Zara, and I go to Burr Elementary School. And I'm here today to tell you why I'm on Eid off. I want to invite my non-Muslim friends to my Eid celebration and not miss any school.
Hi, my name is Mia Eifler, Holland Hill Elementary School in Fairfield. I think we should have a day off on Eid, just like we do on Christmas, Halloween, and other holidays. Plus, it's a great opportunity for people that don't celebrate Eid to learn more about it. And mostly, we don't have to tell our teacher that we will be absent. I don't want to worry about what my teacher will say. Instead, I want to be excited for Eid. Thank you.
Do you know what my favorite part of Eid that comes after Ramadan? I spend time with my family and have lots of chocolate and presents, too.
Assalamualaikum. My name is Mary Malley. I am in second grade in Holland Hill. I'm seven years old, and I think that we should have a day off for Eid because I want all of you to have fun and get a special time and get some fresh air. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education members. It's a pleasure to be here this evening with all of you. My name is Fizansial, and I live at 1263 Brookline Ave in Fairfield. I'm also a seventh grader at Tomlinson Middle School. I came here today to request the board members to add the holidays of Eid to the school calendar. After the month of Ramadan, which is observed by over 500 students and teachers in Fairfield with fasting, prayers, and increased charity, the holy day of Eid arrives. The spirit and festivities of Eid are similar to the spirit and festivities of Christmas, where families go to their place of worship to pray in congregation, celebrate with family and friends, hosting dinners, exchanging gifts, and giving to charity. But when it comes to children who are in school, not so much. Muslim children living in Fairfield deserve to feel the same way other children feel on their holidays. Other faiths have holidays that are recognized on the school calendar, some with multiple days off. Why not the same for me? When I am enjoying Eid and I and the hundreds of other Muslim students should not have to worry about missing assignments, tests, or even how much homework we are going to get that night. Muslim children struggle with this problem every Eid, including myself. Let's make a difference together and follow the steps of our neighboring towns and cities across Connecticut and across the U.S. who are closing the gap on equity and inclusion. Muslim children should feel included just like other faiths. We want to be heard and we want to be seen. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Piga Zulayman and I go to Tomlinson Middle School eh in sixth grade. I think Eid should be a a holiday in the school calendar because Christians and Jews get to celebrate Christmas and other holidays and get a day off and enjoy their holiday. But when us Muslims ge- have Eid al-Fitr, we get no day off because we um we don't get a day off and we don't enjoy our holiday because we worry about school, work, and tests and exams and missing important work at school. Thank you.
Hello there. My name is Shudi Saleh and I'm an eighth grader at Al-Mas. I'm asking for the Fairfield Board of Education to recognize Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Ahdha as official holidays in the school calendar. Having Eid off would be beneficial for all Muslim students in Fairfield because we deserve to have our holiday off without worrying about asking for extensions on certain assignments or worrying about a test the next day. Adding Eid as an official holiday in the school calendar and making it a day off will give it the same importance as other holidays and will make sure students of all religious backgrounds have equal opportunities to celebrate their holidays. Thank you.
Hello, respected Board of Education members. My name is Yahia Hassan and I'm a sophomore at Fairfield Ward High School. I believe that giving Eid as a day off is an easy way of helping us Muslims gain the simple symbolic recognition that we need and deserve. As a high school student, every day I have to face marginalization and Islamophobia, whether from friends who think they are just joking or fellow students who I do not even know that well. Today, I'm, we are asking for one day. One day which can help us educate and enlighten those who have misconceptions about this beautiful religion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lamis Hidar and I attend Fairfield Middle School as an eighth grader. I also have three older siblings who have graduated from Fairfield Public Schools. I'm here on behalf of the many Muslim students in Fairfield Public Schools who want a day off of Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Ahdha, having to worry about making up assignments or tests instead of being happy and enjoying Eid on our very important holidays unfair as we are not able to enjoy our holidays. Whereas instead of many, whereas instead of enjoying, many students have to worry about what they have missed at school or what they have to make up. Or in different scenarios, if there's an important test, students miss Eid, which can be dis- very disappointing. I ask for a day off for Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Ahdha and so, and so do many students.
Thank you. I'm just going to pause for one second. Does anybody want to give comment on another agenda item? Okay, seeing them.
Hello Fairfield residents, board members, and fellow Muslims. My name is Musafah Seal and I am a junior at Fairfield Ludlow High School. I am first generation American and I am a proud Muslim. Living in a country where it's predominantly non-Muslim, I always felt like an outsider. No one knew about Islam more or less what Eid was. After Eid, all my friends asked me why I was in school. And during Ramadan, they would always ask me why I'm not eating food. I felt like my identity just wasn't known. I would have to explain to every single person who asked. I felt like an outsider looking in. It was hard. Especially as a kid where there was minimal representation for Muslims and there was a negative connotation towards us. I was confused because all my friends had their holidays off since I was merely a kid, I thought that Muslims didn't have Eid off because people didn't like us. It made me feel like I couldn't share my traditions and cultures and I was scared to be myself. I felt left off and I didn't know what to do. Even up until a few years ago, I felt like I couldn't be as open about my religion and traditions because people didn't know what it was since they weren't familiar with anything like it. Muslim holidays aren't recognized in any way. Eid isn't even written down on the calendar more or less given to us as a day off. But we need to be recognized. How can a town talk about giving equity and promoting diversity but not take action in order to make Fairfield Public Schools more inclusive? I know there are several hundred Muslim schools who go to Fairfield Public Schools, and I also know people who think that Islam is a race. To solve a problem, we need to recognize it. And this just shows how unrecognized Muslims are and how people aren't educated about us. The first step in taking this is granting Muslims a day of Eid al-Fitr off. Thank you, and I hope you guys thoughtfully cast your vote in consideration of all this.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lena Canucci and I'm a junior at Fairfield Ludlow High School. Um, I understand it's the evening and everyone must be super tired, but I would highly appreciate just about a minute of everyone's attention. Inclusion and the recognition of diversity in our community is something that is constantly discussed in the sense that actions need to be taken rather than simply spoken about. I believe that the best way to inspire change is to be it, which is the main reason why I stand here today. To take, to help in taking action on a matter that is and has always impacted the Muslim community of Fairfield. This concept is actually what inspired a few friends and me to create a club at FLHS called Culture Club where our main goal is to promote the beauty of diversity in a very standardized society. As you're all very aware, Muslim Americans in the Fairfield Public Schools community need this day off as Eid al-Ahdha and Eid al-Fitr are a celebration mandated by God's law for Muslims. I think I speak for all my fellow Muslims here today when I say that the adoption of Eid al-Ahdha and Eid al-Fitr as holidays on the FPS calendar is an efficient way of gaining the necessary symbolic recognition of Islam in American society. No student should ever have to decide between coming to school and spending time with family members and loved ones to celebrate a religious holiday. It's genuinely tragic that these are the struggles Muslims in our community have to face every single year. I don't think I'll ever understand the vast resentment and almost neglect there is against Muslims in the U.S. Nonetheless, I believe the addition of our holidays on the calen- calendar will not only give us a restful day off, but will compel people to educate themselves on this beautiful religion. Ultimately, I leave you all with a quote that I had, I just had to include from the National Inclusion Project of the U.S. Inclusion is not simply about physical proximity, it is about intentionally planning for the success of all students. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Oh, good evening. My name is Lena Alku. I'm a former student of Thomas Middle School as well as graduate of Fairfield Ward High School. Today, I'm here as a member of Fairfield as well as a member of the Islamic community. Um, I am going to be honest with you today, but I believe, I know that you must be hearing things repetitively, repetitively. Um, but I believe that the more you hear it, the more you realize how big of an issue it is um and how much impact it has on this community. The reason being is that the Muslim students in this community are a huge disadvantage because every year they're put in a position where they have to choose whether or not they go to school or miss the holiday. This was a solution given to us. It is not a solution whatsoever. If they choose to go to school, they miss the, the holiday and any celebrations. If they do the opposite, they miss whatever is happening at school that day. I myself have missed many exam reviews, including an AP exam review, um, class activities, and lectures. I have witnessed my friend's struggle to reschedule her AP exam because it ended up on an Eid day. I have also, after prayer, had to return to school because that day I had a group presentation that I had to do. I should not have to worry about catching up. For me, it takes me at least two days to catch up with that one day that was missed. This is unfair. Islam is growing largely in this community. It is time that Fairfield Public School recognizes both Eid holidays and as well as give us Eid al-Fitr eh Eid al-Fitr off. Finally, I want to share with you that when I asked my dad once why he moved my siblings and I back to the U.S., he responded that he wanted us to grow in a country where there is freedom, justice, and equality. For all these fundamental, for all, these are fundamental principles and they're put to test today. And the Board of Education is now supposed to support and reinforce these principles and show that the Fairfield is a home for freedom, justice, and equa- and equality for all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening Superintendent Testani and respected board members. My name is Sami Seal and I live at twelve sixty-three Brooklyn Avenue, Straffield Section of Fairfield. I was a seventh grader at Tomlinson, a fifth grader at Straffield Elementary, and also a four-year-old who will attend Straffield uh next year. Twenty-one years ago, I graduated from Fairfield Ward High School. Go Mustangs! I knew most of the rather small group of Muslim students since we all hung out with one another. Each year before the most important and most festive holiday approached for Muslims known as Eid al-Fitr, my parents would write a note requesting to excuse my absence and letting the teacher know that I'll make up the, any missed assignments, any exams, so I'll not fall behind. That was twenty-one years ago. Twenty-one years later, I'm doing the same for my kids, writing notes asking to excuse their absences to celebrate their holiday in a time where the population of Muslim students in Fairfield has grown exponentially. Today, I'm requesting the recognition of the two Muslim holidays on our school calendar and for Eid al-Fitr to be granted as a, as a day off. If you look around town, the demographics have gradually changed over the past twenty years, especially in our diversity of backgrounds, cultures, languages, and faiths. Muslim parents have lived in Fairfield for decades and continue to move in, raise their children here, and work and own businesses in town. We are vested in the town and are grateful to live here. However, some policies and perspectives need to be revisited. My ask is to mirror our policies and perspectives regarding holidays, not just with the data and the operational checklist, rather mirror the policies regarding holidays by the makeup of our townspeople for a true inclusive place for our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Todd Sample. Um, I live at two seventy-five uh Euclid Avenue, Stratfield area. I'm a neighbor of the Seals. Uh Eid eh as follows, fasting Ramadan is also seen as a spiritual celebration of Allah's provision of strength and endurance. I mean, the reflection rejoicing, Eid is also a time for charity. Teaching and celebrating traditions such as Eid in the classroom is a brilliant way to shed light on the diversity within our schools, teach about cultures and religious traditions, and include, acknowledge, and validate our Muslim brothers and sisters. Let's create space in our lives to learn and acknowledge the truth about our world. Let's intentionally learn about traditions we do not encounter every day. Let's make time and space for different views. Let's validate and incorporate the diversity and perspectives around us and the traditions and understanding who we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Just press the button on just.
Good evening. I'm Vanessa Rose. I'm a parent of four children in the public school system. Um, but I speak to you as a religious leader in town. I'm the pastor of First Church in Fairfield and I want to raise my voice as an ally for my Muslim friends and neighbors who, who need other voices to speak out in support of them. Children learn at school, but they learn by hearing what adults say. They learn most of all by seeing what adults do. And I hope that my children and all of the children in this room will learn by the example of what Fairfield will be saying to the world about how much we value and respect the diversity in this community. I think that this would be more than just a symbolic action. It would be the right thing to do in, in making this change, adding these holidays to the calendar so that our children can also learn and respect their, the traditions of their friends. And of course, giving Eid off. It would be a profound statement about justice for the wider community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marcy Spoliar, um, one ten Brookridge Avenue. I am the Chair of the Education and Recreation Committee of the RTM. Um, and regards to that position, we always talk about fostering inclusivity, um, diversity, and exploring and supporting all our peers in our community. And I think that supporting this holiday into our school calendar will go a long way in working towards that goal as a town. Um, so I hope that you will support that. From a personal perspective, my um child is a senior at Ward High School and has many Muslim friends that, that wrestle with this decision every year. And I can tell you that as a high school student, there's a lot of stress in missing work and making up days. And I think that we need to let this have, be a holiday on the calendar so that they can celebrate their holiday and um without the worries of missing group projects, tests, and exams. So I hope you will support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Hassan Awad. Uh, I'm the Director of Operations for the Council on American Islamic Relations, uh, the largest Muslim civil rights organization in the country. And uh, I'm here to um, tonight to lend my support to the Muslim students and families uh from Fairfield uh on asking to recognize Eid as a, as a holiday, as a district-wide holiday. Uh, Kier Connecticut has been working with many school districts across the state. Uh, some have already recognized Eid as a holiday, including New Haven, Orange, Manchester, Hampton, and we're still working with other districts um in Orange, uh, sorry, in Orange, in, in uh Stamford, Norwalk, and Farmington Valley to promote equality, inclusion, and diversity by having Eid recognized as a holiday. You cannot imagine uh how painfully difficult it is for the Muslim students and children at schools when they are asked by their peers, uh, why are you not recognized? Uh, or your Eid or holiday is recognized eh at, at school district. Uh, I have heard this from a couple of students and I felt pain. Uh, I work with the Muslim community on issues related to civil rights. We know exactly how it affects their lives. We know exactly how it affects their families. And uh, for that, we would like you to recognize Eid as a holiday. Eh, it's a small step, but important for work to ensuring that students from Muslim community feel like they belong here to this district in Fairfield, uh, just as their peers from Jewish and Christian backgrounds. Uh, as educators, uh, I know you recognize uh how important it is for children to have self-confidence and to bring their full selves at school. Uh, these are the values that you teach and that we teach our children every day. It's time to put these words into practice.
That, that's time. I'm sorry.
Okay, so I will come up here. Thank you so much and uh thank you for coming and having us.
Thank you.
Hello, Assalamualaikum. It means, mean peace be upon you. Assalamualaikum means peace be upon all of you. My name is Maymal Kawi. I live in fifteen Ardmore Street in Fairfield. I am a mother of three daughters. You can see them here, three of them. Fourth grader, uh, second grader, and kindergartner at Holland Hill School. One of the great schools in Fairfield City. Yes, I am full busy. I am also a paraprofessional at McKinley School, the most diverse school in Fairfield, which has the large number of Muslim, Muslim kids, by the way. Since two thousand and eighteen, I started volunteering in my kids' school to read stories and bring crafts and activities to teach the kids, the other kids, my kids and other kids about Ramadan and about Eid. And every year when Eid comes, I send emails to all of my three kids' teachers to tell them that my kids need the day off to celebrate. Teachers and all school staff are always welcoming the diversity they have. But there is always a feeling that we take them out from their school while all of their friends are having a normal learning day. And it makes us feel uncomfortable. I try to make more to let my kids feel included and feel the holy month and the excitement of Eid. I contact the music teacher, the art teacher, and the library responsible, ask them to mention Ramadan and Eid, make a book corner at the school library, sing songs in music class, and draw pictures in art. They are always responding and welcoming. And that is wonderful, but still. My question is, should we keep doing all these individual efforts every year in Ramadan and Eid?
That, that was.
At the end, at the end of the day, our kids never feel included. I'm, I'm just like, very sure. Yeah.
Finish your sentence.
Mm-hmm. So, they love to sing songs in Christmas and all the other celebration in music, but will they feel happy? Will, um, I'm sorry, I missed the... So, they love to sing songs for Christmas and all the celebration in music. Will they feel happy singing a song for Ramadan? And will they be happy not missing a class just to go out to celebrate for all these reasonable questions?
That's time. I just want to keep it equitable for everybody. Thank you for your comment. I'm sorry, I hate cutting people off, but we're just trying to keep it fair. Anyways, and just a reminder, we're not voting on the calendar today. That will be at our meeting at the end of the month and we'll be taking public comment before that vote um on November twenty-ninth. Anybody else have to give comment? You, you need to press the button and keep holding it.
Hi, everyone. My name is Albina Yupi. Uh, I live here in Fairfield, forty-four Bennett Street. Uh, I'm a teacher in West. I'm a teacher in Westport. My husband is a police officer in Welton. We have an 11-year-old son who attends, happily attends Fairfield Wood Elementary School. The reason that we live in Fairfield is simply because of its beautiful diversity and inclusion. So with that said, we hope that you put our request in consideration. Thank you so much in advance, and thank you so much for taking the time to listen to all of us. Have a great night.
Thank you.
I know we're on a time crunch, and you guys kind of want to get back home, so I'll keep this brief. But I would really like to expand upon how kind of detrimental this one day that they miss is, because even though I'm not a Muslim myself, my best friend, almost sister since sixth grade is. And all these years that we've known each other, one thing that just sticks to my memory is how dreadful the days before Eid is, are, and the days after Eid are. I remember her just shaking before class, being so anxious and just nervous. Because when you're a child, you're anxious to go up to your teachers and tell them, you know. You're 10 years old. You don't want to go up to them and tell them, "Hey, by the way, I won't be in your class. I'm celebrating a holiday with my family." What are they thinking of you? Do they think you're lazy? Do you think you're going out to party with your family? You're not. This is a very important religious holiday. It ties into more than just partying. It's a part of their identity as Muslims, which is a part of who they are. It's a part of their soul, right? And the work associated with it, this stalls you so much. There, one day of work is a lot of time. You see that ripple throughout the week, maybe even the month, maybe even the whole quarter if you have an important test that day. It's really not easy to make up. It's stressful. It's anxiety-inducing. It's just not fair. I also want to spend Eid with my friend. I want to celebrate that piece of their culture because it's just such an old religion. It's been so prevalent in the Middle East and parts of North Africa and all over the world that it's leached into culture. It's a part of their identity. And living in another country, you just see that you really don't get exposed to your culture very often. And to have that one day where you're just completely enraptured in it is so meaningful and so powerful. It really does connect them to their roots, which is difficult when you live between two cultures. At home, you're one thing. Out there, you're another. It's just, I would really, really encourage you guys to consider that this means a lot to everybody, even if we have a very, you know, a lot of people. It means a lot. Thank you.
That was time.
Hi, dear respected members of the Board of Education. My name is Shereen Magar. I live in 304 Naps Highway. I'm a mother of three students in Fairfield Public Schools and also a certified teacher in Connecticut. Although Eid is a very important event for me, I start my preparation by scheduling an appointment with my principal to ask for a day off. During my five years of teaching, I met some understanding principals who knew precisely what Eid is and others who I had to explain and to give reasons to take a day off. I also have to prepare lesson plans for the sub who's going to cover my classes. I miss my students who deserve to learn about other cultures' events. They once told me that it's not fair that I need to take a day off to celebrate an event which is just as important as Yom Kippur and Christmas. I believe that districts that celebrate diversity and equity will attract more teachers, which could help with the staff shortage problem. With your help, I hope that one day I can celebrate Eid with all my family and friends in Fairfield. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Yusuf Sayal. I'm a Fairfield resident at 185 Hunyadi Avenue, and I've been living here for over 25 years. I have two children, one you heard from earlier, who attends Fairfield Ludlow. The other was in the crowd who attends Fairfield Woods. I would just like to recap a few points and bring us all home. We heard several people talk about Eid al-Fitr, one of our main holy days, which is supposed to be a time of reflection and a time spent with the family. But to some of us, and because of the fact that we're still trying to fit in within this society, the holy days have just become an annual reminder that we are truly different, that we are somehow not a part of an inclusive community, where we only continue to talk about diversity and inclusion, but have not embraced it. You also heard some kids speak about finding their identity. Who am I? Do I truly belong in this community? Will my school accept me for who I am? And especially if I decide to share my cultural values and beliefs. And as an example, do people even understand what happens at the end of those 30 days when I'm fasting during the holy month of Ramadan from sunset to sunrise? Or sunrise to sunset? Sorry, perhaps not. Our Muslim students and teachers should not have to take an excuse to absence and worry about making up that work. They should not have to think about going back to school after their morning prayer just because of the fact that they don't want to miss out on an important project, school activity, or a crucial exam. Instead, it should have provided them with a boost of morale with the understanding that this holy day is now stress-free, worry-free, because my school has recognized and provided this day off to me on the calendar. Instead of going back to school, the next day figuring out what needs to get done, I can now go back and share all the wonderful experiences I had as I spent my holiday with the loved ones. We need to take action now and provide Eid al-Fitr as a recognized day off on the Fairfield school calendar. This will truly make our kids have a place of belonging, a place where they feel included, a place where they feel accepted, which in turn will have long-term psychological benefits. So I would encourage all the board members to approve the Eid al-Fitr holiday as a day off on the public school and be part of the movement.
That's time.
Rather than bystander.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time, and thank you for your patience for listening to all of us tonight.
Thank you. All right, thank you all. Last call, we just, we're going to wrap up public comment. We have a very long agenda. While we all want to get home, it's really more, we have about a couple hours left of meetings to get to, meeting agenda items to get to. So any last comments? Okay, this will be our last speaker.
Hello, my name is Renahi Said of 320 Quincy Street here in Fairfield, Connecticut. I am a longtime Fairfield resident. I went to Sherman Elementary, Tomlinson Middle School, and Fairfield Ludlow High. So as you can imagine, Fairfield is the only home I've ever really known. It makes me a little bit sad to be here today to see the children of this generation going through the same exact thing that I did. I won't go through all the various reasons that we've all covered tonight. Instead, I'll focus on a few other facts. Growing up, I was quite envious of my friends because everybody knew about their holidays, but nobody knew about mine. So Eid always became a little bit bittersweet. I was always falling behind, stressing on how I would figure it out, and it just became tainted. Many Jewish and Catholic holidays, there has always been this unspoken rule in school that there is no homework assigned. It's not an official rule, but we all knew. Teachers would say, "Out of respect." And I always wondered why we did not get the same consideration and thoughtfulness to me and others like me. There are 1.9 billion Muslims around the world, and there are 3.4 million Muslims in the U.S. and at least 100,000 here in Connecticut alone. We know numbers might be a little bit different because of identification issues and senses. However, if your argument is not that there's not enough Muslim students in Fairfield to have a day off, you are looking at it from the wrong perspective. Because truth be told, you should care even if it's one student. Not creating space to have Eid off sends a clear message. Student Muslims do not matter. If your argument is that you are concerned this will open a door for other groups to advocate for themselves, well, I think it's unfair to deny Eid because you are afraid to be more inclusive. If your argument is that you simply do not have the space to add another day due to calendar years, I say it is your duty to make it work. Please don't make us figure out how we should fit in. If you need a suggestion, there's other holidays that we can cut. I hate to use the word Islamophobia because I've met a lot of you board members, and you are not Islamophobic people. However, the very act of denying a Muslim religious holiday is inherently Islamophobic. To offer endless support for our Jewish and Catholic and Christian friends, but not the same for Muslims, is discriminatory in a sense, a clear message.
That's time. Thank you. Thank you all for your comment, and also, we've received a lot of emails. And I just want you to know, the board members do read them all, even though we may not be able to respond to all of them. So I thank you for coming tonight and for giving your comment. And as I said, this will be a voting item. It'll be up for discussion later in the meeting and a voting item at our next meeting. Okay, we are moving on to Student Achievement Data Review. Mr. Testan, I don't know if you have any opening remarks on this, or...
Yes, thank you. Before everyone leaves, I just want to say thank you for everyone to come out tonight to have your voices heard and really appreciate the courage our students to get up in front of all these adults and speak on behalf of their religion. So thank you to everyone. Everyone was given a copy of the Student Achievement Data Review in advance. We have our program directors here that are prepared just to speak briefly in regards to their content areas and then opening up for any questions from the Board of Education.
And just for the public, the board received a pre-recorded video of this presentation as well, which I believe is posted on the website. If you would like to view that at a later time, it's about a half hour long. So right now, we're just going to get a brief overview and have some Q and A. We're just going to pause for the public, just, we have people leaving and people coming in.
So I'd just like to say that as you look at the achievement data results, there are some highlights, some positive things that we can focus on, and also some areas that, as a district, we will work hard to improve upon. As we all know, we're still facing the effects of school closures and the COVID-19 pandemic. But I will say that the feedback that I've received from many of our principals and program directors is that we continue to make adjustments, and we will continue to look at the data in a very methodical and focused way in order to drive instruction and teaching and learning to help our students grow as we move throughout the rest of the school year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Gloss, our Director of Early Literacy and Elementary Education.
Good evening, everyone. So the team that you see here today has had opportunities to dig deep into the data, as you have also done. And before we each go around and very, very briefly recognize a couple of things, concrete action steps that we are doing in each of our respective areas, I wanted to review with you some of the high-leverage practices that were very consistent among all of our efforts. So the first is that we are going to be working to build a data-driven culture here in Fairfield Public Schools. Okay, that means we are going to be using data to make instructional shifts on an almost daily basis. Okay, so for example, we're going to be leveraging the state's IAB interim assessment blocks in order to take a look at where students are at this moment in time and what kind of instructional shifts need to happen in the next day's lesson. I'll give you an example. There are tools for teachers related to our Smarter Balanced Assessment. And the tools for teachers have us embedding the SBA, the Smarter Balanced Language, and the language of the standards in our everyday instruction. So again, for example, we may say to students, "Why did the author most likely use this text structure in order to..." That kind of language needs to be embedded in everyday instruction. The other lever was that we wanted to ensure that each student has equitable access to the curriculum. And what I mean by that is each program director will be working with their teams to remove those barriers in the curriculum and to provide students with multiple entry points in order to access grade-level texts, grade-level standards, grade-level content, and grade-level tasks. This is very important. This is something that we noticed from the data. So now I'll speak very specifically to English Language Arts, and then turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Jen Swangler. And one of the very concrete steps in terms of ELA is that we will be identifying a core set of instructional strategies in response to the data. So the data that you reviewed did show that there was a need in the area of vocabulary and language. And so we need to make sure that in our new curriculum that is being developed, we are explicitly stating what it is we are doing in terms of vocabulary development, as well as language development. These will be explicitly stated in those documents. But I will also mention that we have to make sure that there are opportunities for students at the other end to also deepen their work. So we did see from the data that not only do we have gaps in certain areas, but when students are meeting benchmark, we may not be necessarily accelerating. So we have to make sure that's also explicitly stated.
Good evening, everyone. In addition to what Janine said, looking forward to our partnership, just wanted to say that publicly. We're also looking at how are we responding to student need in Tier Two and Tier Three level of instruction? So when we're analyzing the data and we're looking at the opportunity gap, what do we need to do better within our Tier Two and Tier Three intervention work? Do our teachers have an adequate toolkit pre-K-12 that is in alignment to the core skills necessary for kids to be highly literate and to respond to those test-type thinking questions in the SBA? So our work together pre-K-12 is to do an analysis this year of what do we have currently in place for Tier Two and Tier Three? And also to consider further the training and professional development needs of our reading intervention teachers and also our LASs in efforts to coach into and lean into small group work within Tier One to further support the work that is happening in Tier Two and Tier Three. Thank you.
And just ask you to state your name and your position. That's okay.
Good evening, Lisa Oliver, Director of Social Studies. And when we think of social studies, we think of literacy. Everything we do in the social studies classroom, whether it's elementary, middle school, or high school, is focused on reading, writing, researching, listening, and speaking. And what we do is we leverage those content area skills and utilize the literacy skills to demonstrate our learning. One recent example, and an ongoing example, is the development of our learning progressions for research skills at the middle school in grades six through eight. We've been working very closely with our library and media specialists over the summer and through this year on ensuring that our students across all three middle schools work in a scaffolded way to develop their research skills so that when they enter high school, they come armed with the knowledge to scrutinize resources, whether they be secondary or primary sources, media, literacy, using evidence to develop claims, and then, of course, engaging as local and global citizens.
Good evening, everyone. Digna Alta Gracia Marte, I'm the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And I've been working with the building leaders on strategies for our subgroups and to support our subgroups as we work on the school improvement plan throughout the year, as well as to identify voices of our students. I'm also working with our K-12 literacy program so that we could be able to continue the work throughout all of our work.
Thank you. Walter Wakeman, Program Director for Elementary Mathematics, Science, and Enrichment. Just want to highlight a couple of things. First of all, last year, the board approved a pre-K math program for our pre-K. It's a Bridges program, which is a huge support for our pre-K students, which we're feeding into our kindergarten preparations. It's much more structured, and I think it's a great asset to the district. I'd also like to highlight something else, and it's just one example. In response to the Smarter Balanced results, we took a hard look. And we... In response to the Smarter Balanced Results, we took a hard look, and we, meaning teachers and myself, at where the areas that we looked, that were stagnant. And just to provide you with one example, in fourth grade, the Smarter Balanced Target A, we were on concepts and procedures. We seem to be across the district in many of our schools, an area where we are underperforming. And so utilizing the current resources we have in our schools, we went in and reinforced some of the units so that teachers could pay more attention or more focus on those areas that we need to enhance in our program. And, you know, again, it's a, to simplify it, it might have only been a few lessons focused on that area, and so it was enhanced by adding a few more. And then one other area is the area of science. We've been moving forward with implementing that. We are focusing this year primarily on assessment in science. And that is always based in the standards and keeping that at front and center as teachers are engaged in the professional, professional learning around the science.
Hi, good evening. Justine Lazala, Supervisor of Secondary Science and STEAM. I wanted to talk to you today about some changes we're making to address our NGSS scores. This past summer, working with teams of teachers, we developed new unit implementation guides for our middle school science courses, grades six, seven, and eight, to better align to the NGSS standards and also to bring greater consistency to our middle school science program. We removed some topics that were not addressed in the state assessment, and we added some topics and lessons to more fully align with NGSS. To give you a concrete example, we made some shifts to put greater emphasis on forces at a distance and because students were not universally receiving instruction on those topics. At the same time, teachers are currently receiving curriculum-based professional learning throughout the year to support the implementation of these new units. And when we created them, we also developed common unit-based assessment tasks. So all the teachers across all three buildings and all grade levels are implementing those same assessment tasks so that we can better monitor student learning. At the high school level, we are working on making some changes to our high school program that would better support student success on the NGSS assessment. We, as you all know, for this school year, we added the 10th grade environmental chemistry class in order to support students' learning chemistry within a context and increase enrollment in chemistry in 10th grade. And it's been really successful this year. We have 93% of our sophomores taking either chemistry or environmental chemistry as compared to 75% last year. Okay, and also last month, I brought to you our changes that we're making to the physics course to increase enrollment in physics in 11th grade. It's really important that students do follow that pathway of biology, then either chemistry or environmental chemistry, and then physics in order for them to be successful on this state assessment because all those topics are tested. So just want to share that. Thank you.
So thank you. That was just a very brief overview and examples from each of our respective areas of some concrete action steps that we need to take once we took a look at this data. So we welcome any questions and any clarifications at this time. Take it to the board from questions on any particular slides, Ms. Kelly.
Hi. I'm not sure if there's other, you keep referring to the data, which, is there more than what's in here? Because you said that everything you're doing is data-driven. I don't, unless there's something else that I'm missing, I don't see where the deficiency is in vocabulary and language, like those level of detail. I'm not seeing that in here. I'm just wondering if we had access to that or is that, if I missed an attachment, I apologize.
No, I don't think you missed an attachment. So thank you for that question. Yes, there are many other data sets that we did take a look at. For example, Jen and I worked with the ELA Steering Committee and we did a deep dive, taking a look all the way drilling down to the targets on the SBA assessment. And that's where we saw the need across multiple grade levels where our students were not meeting the standard in terms of vocabulary and language. So we do have that data. We can certainly share those data sets with you. We looked at aggregate data and we also looked at that disaggregated data in terms of subgroups.
Thank you, because if, I mean, if I look at just the total SBA, ELA scores, like obviously there's always room for improvement, but there's nothing on here that's screaming at me, wow, we need, we need a drastic seismic change in anything. So I just, if the devil is in the details, I think it would be helpful to see the details.
Absolutely, we'll get that to you. Anyone?
One quick follow-up to that. Yep. I don't know if Ms. Kelly wants to be, just so that, I want to get the name correct. Ms. Goss, is that, okay, I just want to make sure. I knew the first name, I wasn't sure.
Correct, Janine, yes.
But it's, to what degree, because those sub-scores are numerous. You know, just the SAT alone will have multiple strands. And the SBA by grade has multiple strands. So there will be a, you know, words in context strand just on the evidence-based reading and writing. So I just think it, so that you get what you're looking for, that you're specific to staff about if you wanting all of those strands? Because it, no, just in terms of the amount, because there's a lot to it. I don't know how hard it is to produce, and I'm not saying it's not interesting, but.
Right, and that's fair. And I fully admit that I don't know what I don't know. I don't know how many data points that you're looking at. I only know the big picture here. So, I mean, obviously what would be helpful to me is what you're looking at to say, hey, what, I think it was in fourth grade you had said, or was, maybe that was math. Fourth grade, there was something that was a trigger in fourth grade. The actionable data points, the ones that you, that are the red flags to you that say these are the ones that stick out. If that's harder to produce because you actually have to sift through, then I'm happy to take it. I'm a data geek, give it to me on, I'll sift through and see. But if there's, you know, in fairness, if there was really tomes of data, then if you need to pare it back, then so be it. But I just, I want to see the data that is triggering us to do, to make these changes. Because again, based on what we have here, I look at this and I'm like, Fairfield's in pretty good shape. So I'm not, again, always room for improvement, but I'm just not, I'm not seeing the same data, obviously, and I would just like to see that.
We have identified some patterns of performance when we drilled a little deeper, and I can share those with you as well. And that did span multiple grade levels. Of course, we saw areas of strength, absolutely, but we did see areas where there were opportunity gaps. And we also saw areas where our students who were meeting benchmark in certain areas were not growing. So that was also something that we need to consider as we think about our ELA, our ELA work moving forward.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I did have one other question, sorry. You mentioned about equitable, equitable access to curriculum and that there, what were some of the barriers? Like just, I need an example or two of some of the barriers for the ELA.
So a very simple barrier would be the text level. So we need to make sure when students are working in core that students have access to that level text in order to do the comprehension work, even if they cannot efficiently lift the words off the page. And so you might need to scaffold in order to give kids access to that text so that they can still do the work of the grade level. And that would be just one simple example. Another example might be thinking about the task that you have at hand. That is a grade level task. It could be very complex where we want students to grapple and problem solve, right? Some students might need a different entry point into that. And so we may give them a set of what we call something like formulaic expressions. Those are like sentence starters, things that can get them into the task so that they can have that academic discourse at the same level as their peers. So that's what we mean by making sure that we give them multiple entry points. We give them what we need at that moment. And when they no longer need that scaffold, we pull that scaffold away. But it's there if they need it. So that is something that we're going to be building into our new curricular units very explicitly. Yes, scaffolding and differentiation is happening across the district, but we want to be a little bit strategic in making sure that we're also providing professional learning around how to work with our multilingual learners as well as our students with disabilities. They've got to have access to grade level work.
What else? Ms. Curransey?
I had submitted a number of questions. I'm not sure if they were answered. There were a couple that were into the, anyway, I'm not sure is that, was that completed? Do you know?
Good evening, everybody. James Evajancik, Chief Academic Officer. Those questions are being answered. We don't have the full answers for all of them yet because we have to do some work on them, but they will be answered and sent out to the full board in public once all of them are finished.
Fantastic, thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
I wonder if we could talk a little bit more about the chronic absence issue, which is one of the things that stood out to me most in this report. Obviously, this is, this is something that we've been grappling with for some time. I was noticing that the trends are taking some time to normalize. And at McKinley, they're still horrific.
Mr. Testane?
Yes, so Mr. Peterson, to that point, I think that that is going to be a larger discussion that we're going to have. Creating a district attendance team is one of my first priorities in the coming weeks. That'll be representative of different principals and different coordinators, different departments, so that we can take a look at what we're doing as a district collectively. For example, looking at correspondence and communication with families, trying to get some feedback from those families on what some of the barriers to attending school on a regular basis are. But that will be something that is a priority as we move forward.
Ms. Jacobson?
Just a follow-up, if that's okay. We had created subgroup population absenteeism teams instead of at the district or building level. So can someone report to me on how those teams are working out where we have a subgroup variance?
Zakiya Parrish, Deputy Superintendent. So the school-based teams are reviewing both chronic absenteeism as well as students who are considered truant on a regular basis. And those teams consisting of support personnel, administrators, as well as teachers are constantly reviewing who those students are. At the beginning of the year, they already had an, a list of students who had previously been identified in the previous year as being students that they needed to reach out to immediately upon the start of the school year. And so as a part of that work at the school-based teams, they are trying to reengage, reconnect, connect with families and students and try to get at the root cause for some of the absences. It does vary. I will say that last year, we were under very different requirements with respect to requiring isolation and quarantine, so those no longer exist. So we do foresee that that will, will ease some of the number of absences that we did encounter as a result of those requirements from last year. But it is something that school teams are looking at and trying a variety of different ways to try to actually counteract. And I know that that was one of the things you all highlighted in one of your elementary leadership teams in terms of sharing out some of the strategies that school-based teams are using to try to reengage those students and families, inclusive of some home visits.
So am I hearing that after first quarter, we're in a better situation than our average for last year?
As of right now, because as you know, chronic absenteeism, two days right now is a student is considered chronically absent, so.
The feeling, there, more are back in.
It's definitely better. I think we can't really gauge the numbers per se where we were this time last year just because of, like I said, the number that triggers a student being chronically absent.
Think maybe the board might be interested in hearing from our new position at some point. I don't know when that would be appropriate, but I don't think this should just be a one-point-in-time conversation just around the data. So I don't know when that would be appropriate, but I would love to hear some reporting on the new position, the family coordinator. Thank you, thank you.
Agreed, and had the same question, just for the public. The last budget cycle, we added a few, a family, I forgot the name, blanking on the name, but a family community outreach coordinator that's supporting the McKinley feeder pattern. So McKinley, Tomlinson, and Fairfield Ward. That position is funded through the grant. And we, I think we want to hear about it to see if it's being successful, what information that you've gathered from that position. There was some talk about if, if it's moving the needle and providing the support to our families. Should it be, you know, expanded across the district? Do you see a need at the Ludlow feeder pattern? You know, some work being done there. I would hope this person would, would be across the district need bay. But Mr. Testane, I'm going to trust you to kind of oversee that and just check in. I know that you have some ideas just about addressing chronic absenteeism. So I'm looking forward just to hearing reports on that in the months ahead. I think that we're all very concerned about these numbers and anxious to, to get our kids back in school. We appreciate that the pandemic definitely, you know, had some challenges, but those thankfully so far have subsided, knock on wood. But also, you know, just kids are in different places right now in terms of school anxiety and just re-engaging, that there might be issues that, that our kids are still facing post-pandemic that maybe we didn't necessarily have to worry about as much a few years ago. Ms. Rotelli?
Thank you. I know I mentioned this before. I had recently attended the SEEK Conference, which is the Special Education Equity for Kids of Connecticut. This was a huge topic at that conference. The rates of chronic absenteeism and school refusal in Connecticut are unprecedented across the board. And I just want to keep it on the radar. I know that the pandemic caused a lot of damage for our kids. And I just want to remind everybody, because I know that this is one of those things that we'd like to see fixed as fast as possible, but mental health issues typically don't fix themselves quickly at all. And there were some suggesting at this conference, and I don't necessarily disagree, that anyone who is having a difficult time coming back to school or re-engaging or having school refusal should be evaluated. And as we all know, that comes with a price tag. So I just want to put that out there as a reminder. This will no doubt be a huge part of the fallout from COVID and the mental health disaster that our kids went through.
Follow-up on that? Mr. Peterson, this was your question, so I want to go back to you. We kind of.
I just want to add, I'm confident that we can make inroads in reducing chronic absenteeism in Fairfield. Had pretty good success in doing so in the previous district with much more challenges, so to speak, and larger numbers. So I think collectively, we will show some great growth in this area over the coming months.
Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
Thank you. What, actually through the chair to Mr. Testane in mentioning, and also regarding these school-based teams, now another attendance team, and we have Ms. Robles. So I'm unclear on who's going to be in charge of what.
Well, ultimately, I will be in charge. But I think having a district-wide team to kind of bring best practices together, to be able to support those school-based teams is going to be important. I think Ms. Robles is just a key component and a seat at the table. And we'll have certain responsibilities around that. But I think as a district, we need some support for the school-based teams from a district-led, district attendance team that will share best practices and be able to set the tone for the remainder of the district.
Thank you. Just wanted to check on you, to what issue, to what degree is this likely to be redundant? And, and so that's, she still has her very specific charge and will be communicating, but that's not, there's nothing about this that's diluting her focus to other schools. She's retaining that charge, is that correct?
Absolutely. I think it's just an additional support for her and probably providing a little bit more guidance and focus so that we can target the students and families that need the most support.
Thank you. And I don't actually know, because obviously we are talking about grant money, which means we're talking about potential future budget impact or whatever. Is there? going to, are we going to be able to get data regarding the success? Because obviously, you know, increasingly, if we're going to make an investment in something, let's see what we're getting for it. Is that something that is set up that we will be able to find out more this year? And I don't know. It could be that it's too short a window from September to December. I acknowledge that. But I'll just, I'll throw that out there, that I would be interested in that if it's possible to produce it, acknowledging that it might be hard because of the window. So, don't worry. Plenty of other questions. One thing that I am interested in to Ms. Goss is regarding what you're seeing in the data, and maybe also to Ms. Marte, as we're looking to improve our numbers and to address our achievement gap and reach our district improvement goal for second-grade reading. And what are you seeing in the data that directed the conversation regarding the K through 5 ELA, you know, information and resources that we're supposed to be looking at? Did we get, did we have all the data and time that it can help to inform that decision so that we're looking at getting the best support? Or I was wondering if you could speak to that more?
So we are in the process of a curriculum review cycle. So according to the district improvement plan, we have a huge task ahead of us. And we're really excited about the opportunities, quite honestly. So we have an ELA steering committee, who I've already mentioned, did a deep dive into the data. And to your point, Ms. Kelly, it's, there are some other data sets that we did take a look at that we will share with you. And through the district improvement plan, one of the tasks is to create a vertically-aligned pre-K through 12 ELA curriculum that is culturally responsive, that is standards-based, and that has common formative and performance-based assessments. To that end, we are also to adopt instructional resources that we can align with our curriculum. So that is where we are right now. We have approximately 50 representatives from all 11 elementary schools plus the pre-K classrooms. And we have reviewed three out of the five state-approved programs to date. Tomorrow, we will see the fourth, and on Monday, we will see the fifth. And so what we will do with those resources, once the team comes to a consensus, they have a rubric that they use in order to sort of evaluate what the strengths and weaknesses are of these resources and what would be the best fit for Fairfield, then we will align those resources as we write curriculum, starting in January.
And so to draw in two of your colleagues, obviously, looking into the science of reading and looking at improving literacy, it's one of the big mistakes we, that I think across the Eastern Seaboard we've made, is the vital role that the social studies and science, nonfiction components, down to kindergarten, so even before their reading, but it's being read to them, and how all of that is improving this literacy. So I was wondering if, I don't know if Ms. Sal or Ms. Olivera can speak to, because even though their cycle isn't up, you know, or actually, maybe this would be Mr. Wakeman, sorry, you know, regarding the science for the K through 5, but how those are factoring in, and maybe they're already robust enough, and so they're going to fit right in with what we're doing, or maybe there's a deficit there, and it's going to be holding back the success of our ELA program if those don't match it in terms of building the content knowledge of our students to improve their literacy. So let me toss that one out to you.
The programs that we were looking at are very much content-based, very much. They are science and social studies-related. In fact, that is one of the things, in order to build background knowledge and vocabulary, we absolutely need to make sure they are content-based. And when we write curriculum, they will be content and thematic-based and not skills-based. So that is a focus. And we are making sure that we have our colleagues at the table when we are looking at these resources for those interdisciplinary connections. You know, there's never enough time in the school day. And so, as you know, those interdisciplinary connections are critical. And so we're being very, very intentional in that regard.
Okay. And that's what I was wondering. If they're not at the table, it's hard to, well, is this being consistent or not? You know, whether it's, is Connecticut third grade or fourth grade? History?
Connecticut, well, is third and fourth and fifth. You can't escape it. Yeah. No, it's an excellent question. I'm thrilled that you asked that question. And I have been a part of the program review. And as mentioned last year, when I was here before the board, we plan on having a team of social studies teachers involved in the ELA review. And coincidentally, it's going to coincide with the Connecticut social studies standards that they're developing right now, K through 12. They're before the State Board of Education, and we should be seeing those in January, if approved. And that just further solidifies that thrust and that solidification, I used the word twice, but it further solidifies the need for us to have that content knowledge to drive the development of those skills. So we're very excited about that.
Just to support that, to give you some indication, over the past few years, we have purchased some resources for the classrooms that do align. We are in the process of, obviously, there's work being done with the literacy at the elementary level. And so that's going to be a tremendous resource. But there are some current resources, nonfiction resources related to the standards that are in current classrooms. There does need to be work done in strengthening the alignment with actual units and locations as to which resources would be highlighted, which would be used as core books across the classrooms.
But that conversation is happening in conjunction with this ELA work?
That is, we're coming forward, yes.
Fantastic. Thank you. Next question, and I'm sorry, I can't do these in a more logical order, but I don't know, Dr. Zavajancik, if you're the best one to ask this too, but in looking at the data, even at the, you know, 30,000-foot level that we are with that, I was wondering what, if you can describe to me, the nature of the conversations happening across elementary schools? I can only wonder how well Ms. Goss is getting, how well, her strength at bi-locating. But in terms of these, the data points across the schools, some of which might be predictable based on previous trends, but obviously, that's not satisfying Fairfield Public Schools anymore. We're looking to address that. So what are we doing about conversations across schools to see what is going on? I don't know how else to put it besides that.
I'll see if Ms. Goss wants to answer in a moment. I know at the elementary leadership team meetings, which are our level meetings, we have them for middle, high school, and elementary. We're always looking at the internal and the external, meaning the smarter-balanced data sets. We do recognize the variability that you see in some of the sets there, and we did want to make that public, as well as look at those areas of schools that are showing advancement in meeting the standards at higher levels, maybe than other schools, not to rank and sort, but to replicate within those practices. Ms. Goss puts it as a standing agenda item on the elementary leadership team meeting to share those best practices as well. But we do want to shake that variability out of the system in terms of the curriculum. We have a standardized curriculum and a standard way of essentially doing business for our students, and we should see some results that are similar across buildings. To your point, knowing that there are variations in what our students come to school with as well.
One of the ways that I've been able to connect the dots is obviously by being in the schools and visiting, being in the classrooms, working with the principals. I do a 90-minute sort of entry into their world, where I meet with the principal, talk about what's very unique about their particular building, what strengths they see in terms of literacy in their buildings, and where they want to continue to grow. Then we visit classrooms, and together we take a look at instructional practices and what we would highlight and what we might wonder about next steps, right, and what feedback you might provide to the teacher. And then we come back, and we spend about another half-hour debriefing what it was that we saw and think about next steps. And I did that in every single elementary school, and I'm starting at the high school tomorrow, actually. And then we developed these patterns that we saw across the schools. And then I shared those with the ELT committee. I did the same with the language arts specialist in every single building. I did the same with multilingual learner teachers in every single building. And from there, we were able to see what the patterns were in terms of instructional practices, what the needs were, what the strengths were, what people valued. And that's really how we came to what our rubric is when we're taking a look at these programs that are going to help inform the curriculum work, because we don't want to lose what Fairfield values, but we also want to make sure that we are accelerating learning for each and every one of our students. And so there's a balance there. And so we definitely take the input from every single building, from our leaders, from our teachers. And I've really been having a good time getting to know everybody. I really have. So thank you for that question.
That's wonderful. Of course, I have to go right to, I'm sure the honeymoon is going to end soon. And, you know, so I just, I know that one of the things that you're going to be running into is people who love the way that they're approaching something now, and it's not cutting it. You're, a school can be underperforming, a grade can be underperforming. And so I have to believe that these conversations, to the degree, I mean, maybe most of it's going to be facilitated through you, but I don't know to what degree they're ever meeting with each other, to just see that there's a practice out there, and the old way isn't working. And so I...
So as of, I'm sorry.
Nope, go right ahead.
As of tomorrow, there will be those 50 representatives from every single elementary school that have spent now eight hours together. And they are calibrating, and they are talking, and they are coming to some consensus of some of the opportunities that they see moving ahead. You know, curriculum has not been written in 10 years, right, for ELA. So it's kind of the perfect storm, I call it. And I'm really developing good relationships with folks. And if they know that they're going to be fully supported along the way, that goes a long way. I mean, that's what's really, really critical. And Mr. Testane is very committed to helping us develop a professional learning plan in order to see this work through. And I said today, I cannot wait to see what comes of this district in the next year or two, because we're all going to be talking the same language around this new curriculum, speaking for ELA anyway. And there really are good things to come. We don't, we want to continue to value what everyone really feels is working here. And that's why my entry plan did just that. We made sure that everybody had an opportunity to share that, and we will show that reflected in the work that we have ahead of us in our curriculum development.
Thank you. Did you have a follow-up?
You have a follow-up? Ms. Jacobson?
So in regard to everything that Mrs. Maxine Kelly just said, can you briefly speak to the focus on same concepts but writing?
This is going to be a comprehensive approach. Phonological and phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary comprehension, writing process, written response to text, rapid letter naming fluency, that's very important, the automaticity. So comprehensive, right? So writing process is something that Fairfield absolutely values. And Fairfield's been doing a very good job in terms of written expression. They have, they are very well sort of trained in order to deliver writing process through what they call this gradual release model, writing workshop. And when we looked at these programs, every single program that we have looked at uses writing workshop as the delivery method. So we want to make sure that the primary resource that we adopt does just that, and make sure that if it doesn't, that we can supplement with some supplementary resources. That's what you have to do. Not one of these programs is going to be perfect, and the state will tell you that. We have to do what's right for Fairfield. So absolutely.
Thank you. A question to Dr. Swingler regarding, when you referred to those Tier 2 and 3 interventions at the secondary level, just curious as a data point, to what degree, because again, this would then filter down to Ms. Goss and everybody else at the table, to what degree do we look at the data, affiliate it with a name, and know where are we needing high school interventions for students who are transfers versus students who have been with us throughout, and therefore, in theory, were supposed to benefit by the vertical alignment that we are speaking of here? Because to me, that would be a very, to me, anyway, would be a very interesting data point, because if it's a matter of, most of them, you know, anyone needing those Tier 2 or 3 supports who are newly identified, and they were with us the whole time, something didn't happen, or something was missed. And I just, I know as a high school teacher, constantly wondering what happened before me, and that's a piece of communication that's rarely contributes to the conversation. And I don't know if that's something you can speak to or not.
Thank you. So one thing that you know is a priority within the DIP is that work around SRBI and our translation into a multi-tiered support system. So we continue to advocate and grow the work of how we are identifying kids, and the earlier, the better. We know this. Research proves that earlier intervention, as you just said, is better for kids. So that's why Janine, sorry, Ms. Goss and I are going to be looking through that K-12, pre-K-12 lens, because we want to make sure that kids that are here in Fairfield, that we have the earliest opportunity to identify and to support. So exactly to your point. I am also curious as to why, I don't accept that a student would all of a sudden emerge as a need in high school. That, to me, is something that we, as a system, cannot accept as part of our thinking. Instead, that MTSS system, supporting kids through their social, emotional, behavioral, and academic needs, is something we need to continue to concentrate on and is a focus area of the DIP. I would say some of the hope that we have is some of the work that's happened at the middle school level, though I know it's not at the high school level yet, I'm going to use that key word, "yet," that support that the board gave us with those middle school SRBI coordinators, the principals will tell you, have been such an incredibly influential and supportive role, that we have moved the needle in looking at student work through all levels and through all teachers. So as you said, to tie back to your earlier question around science and social studies, collective teams are around the work and looking at student work from the different disciplines to question where kids are in literacy, not just in ELA, but also through that content area work. So as we continue to build systems and structures around the MTSS work, we hope to bridge that gap of early intervention and catch kids as early as possible. We want to continue to build our teachers' capacity to be strong interventionists and also to be responsive in the classroom. So to have that toolbox, as we were saying earlier, to be able to recognize, modify, and adjust quickly and efficiently and effectively with high levels of rigor and intent.
Want to give you a real quick, concrete example. One of the very first things I did was, when I met with the language arts specialist, we noticed that there was a need in terms of decoding and encoding, in terms of being able to provide a systematic and explicit program for students in need in Tier 2. And so we purchased a program very quickly, and we are having our second training on Friday. And so I want to make sure this toolkit for every single pillar, for phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, comprehension, written expression, if there is a need, our interventionists in Jan Ed have the tools that they need in order to help remediate. And so that was the very first thing that I did. I called it my low-hanging fruit. And the interventionists are loving having something that's systematic and explicit.
Just that is so exciting. I just have two remaining questions, if it's okay. First one was regarding the science to Ms. Sal. I'm wondering, your comments about the science make me wonder two things. First, based on what the NGSS asks of our students and the knowledge they need to have, and the four branch, I don't know if branch is the right word, four aspects, areas of science that they're supposed to have for that, does that in any way make Fairfield Public Schools consider greater mandating of hitting those buckets? Because we don't do it now. We say, you take science, and we leave it up to choice, and we like students to have buy-in. But in fact, they could avoid much of what they need for that test. So that was my first question, if that impacts your thinking at all. And then secondly, are we, and I apologize that I forget this already, are we really hitting the earth science component in the 7th and 8th grade so that we're not worried about that aspect of the NGSS test? Or, so in terms of, and I'm focused, in that question, obviously, I'm focusing solely on the 11th grade of how we're preparing them for that. So those four fields, and then also the, is this something that you are even considering as a conversation of mandating to a greater degree?
You asked really good questions. So I would say first and foremost, so there's three areas of science that are tested on the assessment, life science, physical science, and earth science. We're used to thinking of chemistry and physics as separate disciplines, but in NGSS... but in NGSS, they're both considered physical science. So really, the learning at each grade band level is an expectation that students, one-third of their learning, content learning is around life science, one-third is around physical science, and one-third is around earth science. I'm going to answer your first question about the middle school. There are a full chock of standards in middle school, earth science, life science, and physical science, in that you couldn't work on high school standards yet because you still need to do all the stuff in middle school. So that takes up the entire 6th, 7th, 8th grade, right? It feels like a lot right now to our middle school staff, the stuff that they need to work on, because it's also working on the practices as well. So there is not current thinking about having kids do earth science in 9th grade because they have earth science in middle school that they need to do first before they can do the high school earth science standards.
Right, and we moved earth science out of 9th grade very deliberately. So it's, I wasn't advocating for that. It was, I was curious if middle school felt they had sufficient time and maturity in their students to cover it well. And then, thank you for correcting me on the chemistry and physics. So thank you about that.
And so just to clarify too, for NGSS, you really want to have phenomena-based units? So they're focused around real-world phenomena, which tend to be interdisciplinary? So even though right now, most of the earth science standards are in 6th grade, some of the phenomena that we've chosen for 8th grade hit on earth science concepts. So it's kind of nice because we're bringing back those concepts as we're doing physical science in 8th grade. So you're hitting them kind of spiraling is really our goal for science, to come back to these concepts over and over through different contexts. As far as the high school, I think one of my big concerns that I do have is that students are not currently guaranteed instruction in the standards. And that is impacting the scores that we see. I would like our high school scores to be stronger. I think they would be if our students were 100% receiving instruction in the standards. Right now, we have a large number of students, juniors, that are taking forensics, which is a great course, but in my mind is an elective and is not core science. And it doesn't help them prepare for NGSS. So we have a huge pool of juniors this year who are going to be taking NGSS that haven't learned physics, haven't learned, maybe they didn't even take chemistry. Or they didn't, and part of the decision to create environmental chemistry is to bring earth science and physical science standards together in one course so students would have that background. And what I presented to you last month with the changes to physics, we're also incorporating more earth science into the physics course to make sure that kids are guaranteed instruction if they take the physics. But right now, they're not required to. So my goal next year is to encourage more juniors to take physics. You know, colleges like to see physics on a student's record. Also, I think students might be intimidated. There may be students who decide at some point, they want to do engineering, but I never took physics in high school. And now I'm a little nervous because I don't have the background in it. So by creating the new course that we were creating, it's more accessible, it's grounded in real-world phenomena, it will, we're offering the CP version, and just that, hopefully. But it's a bigger discussion, and the question is, you know, do we wait for our curriculum review to make those bigger changes? Right now, I'm just trying to make incremental changes to improve based on the fact that we're kind of in the in-between phase.
Thank you. And then my last question, the one thing that hasn't been broached at all is the summer boost program. In terms of, and I don't know, maybe a decision has already been made budgetarily, and we just don't know it yet. But if we're going to be putting any money behind that again, there was nothing in the data that supports it continuing. And I'm not saying that there isn't something there that we're missing and that there isn't more to consider, and maybe it's going to be reimagined. But I don't know if that's something that anyone can speak to, that there was some hidden gem in that summer boost data? Or, but again, it's, I'm anticipating it coming up possibly as a discussion in the next one to two months. So I don't, I don't even have a question to ask about it because to me, those numbers were hard to decipher.
So last year, what we saw, we saw similar response in terms of the performance from students that were in the program that, in terms of when they assessed in the fall. We didn't see the impact until the winter assessment. And so last year, I believe, I responded to one of, that was one of the questions that was posed by one of the board members. If you refer back to the April 10th, 2022 board meeting, when that data was shared, the boost data was shared at that particular meeting, and that's when we saw the impact of the program. Not immediately following the wrap-up of the program, but in their scores, that subsequent winter. In terms of funding, it was a part of the ESSER grant. And that was, you know, those funds have been pretty much exhausted. So it wasn't something that, beyond the scope of the grant, was there an intention to, you know, continue unless, of course, it becomes something that comes before you as a part of the board budget?
I love your use of "unless". So I guess to be continued? Okay. And then finally, just to Mr., through the chair, to Mr. Testani, you mentioned that, because I had trouble accessing the Google Sheets. So the questions that I emailed in, would they be included with what Dr. Zavjansik is answering or addressing when the answers get sent out to the full board?
Yes, the ones that you sent last night? Yeah, we were working on.
Way to out me, yeah.
I just wanted to be clear, I didn't miss nothing.
Yes.
So yes, we discussed those this morning, and we're going to get those to you as soon as possible.
Okay.
Everyone's going to take a look at the, especially the AP data that you referred to.
Thank you. Ms. Kelly?
Sorry.
Last question, then, and then we're going to move on.
Yeah, I guess I'll email a majority of my questions, so we can move on. But I just wanted to ask, I know I'm probably not the only one at this table suffering a little PTSD from our math curriculum review process. So I'm very concerned about this KL through 5 curriculum review. And just because we brought it up, I don't want to go through all of it right now, but I did want to ask, because you had mentioned the 50 representatives. Are there any language, are there any of the specialists on that team, or are they only teachers?
Multilingual learner teachers, special education teachers are on there. We have an administrator on there as well.
I also want to say, I didn't mean to say only teachers. That came out very badly, so I apologize.
We do have representation from all stakeholders. We wanted to make sure that our K-2 and R-3, 5 teachers, as well as pre-K teachers, had the most representation at that table because they are the ones ultimately that are going to be the end users. Our multilingual learner teachers and special education teachers will also be using parts of the program to support core instruction. And so yes, that's how we divided up our stakeholders.
Okay. And then, I'm assuming when you say you reviewed three out of the five processes already, that, actually, I'm not assuming. I don't really know what that means. Is it literally, I've just, you've looked at the resources? Like people have been meeting with the publishers and seeing the resource? It's not like we're seeing any live implementation of this or seeing where anybody else has piloted. We're literally just looking at a resource?
We're looking at a resource. We're listening to publisher presentations. We do see some videos. But one of the asks has been, once we come to a consensus, can we go out into the field and seed an action? And that will be a follow-up item, absolutely. That has been an ask from the folks at the table.
And then lastly, I'll email the rest of the questions. But just because we did do the math survey, and I felt like there was some pretty useful information. I know that was post-curriculum rollout. But I'm wondering, just to throw it out there, if there would be any benefit or interest in doing a survey before something gets rolled out? So we could see, because I feel like a lot of the input on the math survey were opinions that probably were held prior to the rollout and weren't just post-rollout. So, and I think that would have been beneficial for us as a board to see, to get a sense of what the teachers and the staff and the people who are actually on the ground had to do. And I'm just throwing out there that I would have some sort of interest. And mind you, I was not interested in doing the math survey that much in the first place. But seeing the results that came back, I would be very interested to have more of a sense of, I get it, change is hard, nobody wants to do that kind of stuff. But some of the stuff that came back in that other survey was very eye-opening. And I think it would be nice to know if the sentiment was. I just don't want to rush into it because I feel like, again, I have PTSD. It's not even post, we're still in it. So I have continuing stress disorder, and I don't want to continue that.
I am going to have hard data for you based on the rubric in terms of the things that Fairfield values, things like writing process, rigor, student choice in terms of text. And they're rating each of those things on a scale of 1 to 5. And so I will have that hard data for you. Then they will come to consensus and give us their top choice, as well as their second, you know, choice as well. So I will have that data for you. I hope that helps.
Ms. Gerber had a follow-up to that line of questions.
Yeah, really, really quickly, and I don't want to get too far off, but just because we have kind of veered a little bit into the topic of the ELA curriculum development. One thing that the board was emailed about, and I just had a question, and if it's too complicated to answer right now, that's fine. My understanding is that some districts have chose to request a waiver regarding choosing one of these packaged programs. And I was just curious if that's something that our district had considered? And if not, why not?
So that?
We did not consider it mainly because the districts, and I've spoken to a few of my colleagues that have considered it, already have a comprehensive program in place that they can refer to. We technically do not. So really, to sit down and write a waiver without really having anything to fall back on would not be well received. I think we also all agree that getting some consistency and continuity and explicit curriculum and resources across the district will benefit all children here in Fairfield.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobson?
This is the last question. When do you think we're going to get the AP report?
That's a good question. We're hoping by Friday. That's what we're shooting for.
And will we have the longitudinal, just basically a new column of what we've got before?
We're planning six years.
Okay, thank you. And just, I know I ask for it every year, so I just, going forward, can we just make it part of tonight?
It is noted in our plan for next year.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. There's a lot still here, and I'm sure people still have questions. The Google Doc, can it be still open for board members? And I know some of us had, it was comment-only, had problems accessing it. So just double-check, just so we can all input directly and not have to send to Mr. Testani, and then you guys have to enter. So appreciate the work on this. Board members, if you have additional questions, the doc will be open. We, based on those questions, if this needs to come for a follow-up on a future agenda, we can always add it. I think for the ELA, there's a lot of concern and questions, teachers, parents, board members. I think we're, to Ms. Kelly's point, we, you know, want to be thoughtful, appreciate the work that needs to be done. But I think just more frequent updates would be valuable for everyone involved. So thank you for all your work and for the presentation. Okay, moving on to old business, approval of course ASL 2. That the Board of Education approve the course ASL 2? Ms. Maxicelli, can I have a second? Ms. Jacobson, any discussion? Seeing none? Any members of the public like to give comment on this item? Seeing none? I think I'm just going to recap for, the board was very enthusiastic in our comments when this was presented at our last meeting. And we will vote and see if that enthusiasm translates. So all in favor? Motion carries 9-0. Adoption of policy 616251, students' survey of students. That the Board of Education adopts 616251 students' survey of students. Give a motion, Mrs. Maxicelli, a second, Mrs. Gerber. Mrs. Maxicelli?
Yes, I didn't receive any questions about this, so I don't know if there are any additional at this time.
Any questions for the policy committee? Seeing none, we'll take to the public. Any members of the public like to give public comment on this? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote, all in favor? Motion carries 9-0. Moving on, adoption of policy 5113, students' attendance excuses dismissal. That the Board of Education adopt policy 5113, students' attendance excuses dismissal. Ms. Maxicelli, seconded by Ms. Jacobson.
So once again, the only question I received was Mrs. Gerber's at the last meeting. So aside from that, I don't know if there's anything else new.
Any other questions? I did receive some questions just from some parents about, not about the policy, but just in general, in terms of if my student is absent 10 days, you know, what counts as an excused absence, what doesn't? Do they need a doctor's note? So I think that after we take action, it might be some communication on this policy would be helpful, just so parents know what is considered excused, what isn't? Do they need a doctor's note on, you know, attendance day 10? There seems to be some fear going out there of sending kids to school sick because they don't want to have too many to accrue too many days absent. And obviously, we want kids to stay home if they're not feeling well. So with that, we will take it to the public. Any public comment on this? Should I do that already? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote, all in favor? Motion carries 9-0. Okay, next. The Board of Education approve the deletion, recommend a motion, that the Board of Education approve the deletion of policy 6159, instructions, special education. Ms. Maxicelli, second, Mrs. Gerber.
Again, just a reminder, in case, especially if someone in the public is just tuning in, this is basically a very, very brief policy that is entirely redundant. It's covered by law, there's no need for it, and thus, it was the recommendation of staff to delete.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, take it to the public for any public comment? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote, all in favor? Motion carries 9-0. Moving along, approval to delete policy 6171, instructions, special education. Recommend a motion, that the Board of Education approve the deletion of policy 6171, instructions, special education. Mrs. Maxicelli, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. Same. Any questions on the board? Seeing none, take it to the public. Any public comment? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote, all in favor? Motion carries 9-0. All right, we're picking up some time here, guys. Talking my fastest right now. All right, all right, slowing down now. Moving on to new business, first quarter financial report. Ms. Laborius?
Good evening, Corinne Laborius, Chief Financial Officer. Hello, everyone. So we're still really early in the fiscal year. The first quarter was as of September 30th. We did have an opportunity to give a preliminary presentation to the Finance Committee, I think it was last week, at the most recent Finance Committee meeting. Hasn't changed much since our meeting. Overall, there's a projected surplus of $2.6 million. And broadly speaking, this is a result of greater than anticipated attrition and due to shortage in the bus driver population. So within the personnel services, there's a projected balance of $2.2 million. This will drop by $700,000 when you see the Q2 results because of the transfer, to be specific, $689,000 that the board approved because of our parent educator shortage to fund the parent educator contract, which I'm pleased to say has reduced our vacancies to about 12 in the parent educator world. So thank you to Mr. Mancusi and his staff for really dedicating themselves to getting that in place. And we have a, so it will drop by about $700,000. We have a corresponding surplus in health insurance for the same reason as we have unfilled seats. We do not have insurance costs. And I also want to acknowledge that, I spoke with Mr. Testani earlier, I did get a request for some detail on the attrition from yesterday from Ms. Kelly that I'm happy to pass around as soon as I'm done with this part of the report, that we can just talk through briefly, because it is a big driver of the surplus, and it'll be a big conversation as part of the budget, I'm sure. So thank you for that question. For transportation, our assumption here is if we continue at our current rate of buses that we're running, we'd have about an $884,000 surplus. But we're showing a $543,000 surplus because our Transportation Director has been working very closely with first student to do better than our peers in trying to get additional drivers. And so our hope is that we can expand for additional And so our hope is that we can expand four additional buses, Tier 2 buses, and two additional six-hour buses on December 1st, so that would result in a lower surplus. We are happy to report that we are budgeted for 119 buses and 169 runs, and we're running 102 buses with 162 runs. So I wanted to just publicly say thank you so much to our bus drivers that are doing this for us, and we recognize their great efforts, and we also recognize that it's challenging, and we still have a little ways to go. So we were happy to have Mr. Schneider join us at the Finance Committee meeting and talk a little bit about that, and I'm sure Mr. Peterson can share additional information if people are interested. The report also shows a net negative in sped expenses, but that's not the full picture. We're actually a positive 200K because of the $700,000 transfer. They're reflecting the actual projected expenses, including those contracted special behavioral therapists that are covering our par educator gap. So what you're just seeing is a point in time, the budget hasn't transferred yet because the board didn't approve that until after September 30th. So we're actually a net positive in special education. And again, that does include all of the assumptions we spoke about, about the adjustment for the excess cost reimbursement, as well as the loss of the ARP monies that we had last year. We're, will likely have a greater surplus in copying. Mr. Peterson will be happy to hear. We are piloting a program that will utilize a card reader to make printing more efficient and hopefully reduce our usage of paper. And so we hope to show you that throughout the year, but this is a conservative estimate as of now. We see a projected gap in legal services with a greater than projected usage for, related to Title IX and other general non-special ed matters. We're on target for what we expected to spend in special education, and Mr. Testane is monitoring that to make sure that we're looking to get back within budget where we can. We are flush in maintenance and operations, as you can see, and we do anticipate full spending in capital with the small exception of a small balance in plant equipment maintenance. And so while you think of your questions, I'll hand around the attrition analysis.
Does anybody have any questions? We're Ms. Laborius. Ms. Jacobson?
Maybe this might be to Mr. Peterson, I'm not sure. The bus analysis, does this mean that we could effectively run with this amount of buses and runs, or is there some sort of a negative impact, meaning they're really crowded, or they're on the bus for a really long time, longer than we would like, or just what does that reduction in runs actually mean?
Can I just chime in on that from the Transportation Committee side? We are having a lot of complaints, Ms. Jacobson, that bus runs are, no, no, I just want, I want you to know, because the bus runs are extremely long, and we have a tremendous amount of late buses. Just last week, in my school alone, I received three days, I got texts of buses that are late. Buses are filled to capacity in some cases. Some people will say, they'll see the middle and high school buses and say, well, they don't seem full, so how can it be? But don't forget, as Ms. Laborius mentioned, they're in tiers. So one bus is picking up the middle school then, or the high school, then the middle school, and then the elementary school, and because of the shortage and the less number of routes and actual buses, we're not only seeing overcrowding, but we're seeing late buses. And just to point out that over the last couple of years compared to previous, we had already reduced the number and made it more efficient. So what's happening now is caused by shortage. Yeah, so it's, it's, I would, I will say that during budget time, I will be advocating for a continuation of the full set.
Part of the question was to get to if that is the case, so that we understand that there may be savings in this budget, but it's not a good thing. That's, right, so.
It's coming at a, it's coming at a non-monetary cost.
I don't mean to say it like that, like, okay, yay, but I'm, you understand what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, it's a non-monetary cost, I think.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
No, I just, I would, I would echo a lot of the things that Mr. Asa just said. It was a very productive discussion that we had with Mr. Schneider in Finance Committee. I got, we got a lot of color. I think that the administration and the Transportation Department is working very hard with limited resources. You know, one thing that Ms. Laborius alluded to and was discussed in Finance Committee was there's some driver certifications that are coming through, and hopefully, we'll have more drivers shortly. Not, not a lot, and not, not as many as perhaps we need, but to relieve some of the, some of the strain. You know, Mr. Schneider did say, he was, he was pleased, said, you know, in-town routes are something like 10 minutes on average longer this year, but so far, he's been able generally to keep those runs for, from under, to an, under, under an hour, which is still, you know, obviously, long for, for, for many, for many kids. But I feel very confident that they're working as best they can with the resources that they have. But yes, you're absolutely right. This is not, this is not, this is not a good problem to have, this is a bad problem.
Yeah, and just to add, we're in a unique structure where a lot of districts pay for buses, and they set their rate at the beginning of August, and our, our Transportation Director did do a good contract for us in that we just pay for usage, and we're able to amend that usage as we go. So it is unfortunate that we have savings, but it is a testament to the way that the contract was negotiated. And in addition to that, it is a really challenging situation. And again, we thank our bus drivers because that means they're working tremendous amount of hours, and when they're out sick, you're seeing even more delays and things like that, so.
Ms. Asa?
Just another question on transportation side, and you may have discussed this in Finance, Mr. Peterson, I'm not sure, but how, how was the increase in, in fuel and whatnot, is that being factored in here, or is that separate because that's kind of like a different pool through the town? I can't remember.
It is factored in here, yeah. And right now, we're counting on, thank you for asking, 422 for diesel and 297 for gas, so if that increases, that'll reduce our surplus. We're looking at, as we build out the budget, we were looking at similar rates, but we have to refine that as we go.
And, and can you just confirm that, that we don't negotiate those rates, right? Is that the town side that does that?
Correct, yeah, yeah. But we're, we're looking for better partnership there. I think it's, it's worked well so far, but to the extent, if we can try to get a better deal, we want to work with them to partner to do so.
Okay, well, that sounds good. I mean, I see six-something dollars a gallon at the gas station for diesel, so if we're paying in the fours, I know we're not paying the tax, but that's good.
Yeah, we're concerned about next year, but we'll see. You know, we will get our best estimates as close to budget time as we can.
Ms. Maxicanelli?
This is a real simple question, but is there a reason that this is so enormous? I, no, I like, is there something in the details that we were supposed to be gleaning from this, or is this the nature of future financial reports, and that there's something? I'm, I'm looking for a kind of Cliff Notes of what should I have been seeing here? Because this was.
Sure.
Sizable.
Yes, okay, so the verbal description should help you if you look at that, but I like to, so what I did change a little bit, the front page, which is page three in your packet, is that high-level summary that you're used to seeing. So if you wanted to just see the 1,000-foot view, you would just look at that for the major categories. This is the 2.6 million, but if you are interested in drilling down further, you know, I would start here, and I would say 2.1 million, that's, that's kind of 2.2 high for personnel. So, but if you just care about the high level, I'm going to show you Q1, Q2, Q3, so we can watch over time how it changes, and I'll be explaining the high-level changes. Again, it's early in the year. The unencumbered balance down below, it's really for me, but also just a point of data reference, because I like to watch where it is relative to five years prior, to make sure there's nothing jumping that's anomalous about how we're doing this year. So it's unencumbered, I look at it as a percentage of spend, but that's just, just another point of reference. The next page is a report that you all have gotten in the past. It's a little bit more detail, only because for me, it's hard for me to think in balances, so I'm showing you in the first column, the budget, the revised budget, because that matters for the transfers, because we're now doing more real-time transfers with you, you know, meaning because we have such a big surplus, because we're doing a good job estimating it earlier in the year, we're going to ask for permission to do those transfers earlier, not at year-end, because we think that's appropriate for the board to have time to do that. That's what Mr. Testane has asked me to do, is to be, you know, have that information early, so that we're able to have that conversation. Our year-to-date actuals is just to show you how much we've spent, how much is encumbered, and then how much is projected in additional encumbrance, leading to that projected balance. If you are interested, so for example, in fixed charges, that's our insurances, you can see, we haven't really encumbered anything as of September 30th. We only have actuals because we only encumber as we go. It, it might be interesting, it might not. So this is just to give you that, that high-level detail. Pupil personnel expenses, line 16, for example, that's all sped, that's not transportation. You're seeing, you know, 14.8, the budget wasn't modified. We've only spent 3.9, but we have another 13 encumbered, and you'd say, huh, why is that negative 1.8? The negative 1.8 is because, as you know, we don't, we don't do the journal entry for that excess cost revenue until after the first quarter. So our projected balance is negative 430 there. We're going to do a transfer of 700K, so it's going to be a plus 200. So it's just to say, that's a lot more detail. Then if you flip to the next page, page six, I would say, it's just a different way of looking at it. So this is what you all had asked for in the past, and I don't necessarily have to keep doing it this way, but at one point in time, it was interesting to see the same information but broken out in these categories. Followed, following that is just a series of UNIS-generated reports. So this is, we push a button and generate the report from UNIS. It's good to put in the public record because it's a good for a point of comparison. Q1, this year, Q1, last year, if you wanted to go back and look at, you know, something as a means of comparison. And then it's just a little bit more detailed, followed by our grant summary report, which I haven't, I don't usually typically review with you in Q1, but I will in Q2. But we're on target with the grants for what we would expect to have drawn at this point in time.
Ms. Asa?
I, I just, not to, I don't know, disagree with what you said, but hopefully, that explanation helped, but I just wanted to say, I very much appreciate this format, and I actually like the extra detail, because it does make it easier to, I mean, it's time-consuming, but to go through, so that when we get to the future quarters, we can kind of track it and follow it. And, and I think Ms. Kelly called herself a data geek, I'm a numbers geek, so this is very helpful, so thank you.
Sure.
I, I do want to clarify, I wasn't opposed to this, because I fully recognize that it was more of how different it was, and I just wanted to get the clarification on, is this because of something, or is it just to give the additional numbers to tell the story better earlier? And finally, if this was going to be the new norm? That, that was the only reason for my question, I wasn't objecting to it.
Did talk briefly about it in Finance Committee, so some of the changes are what we had talked about in Finance Committee as well.
And, and I, just to call myself out, I, I'm always asked for more information.
Ms. Kelly?
I'll get to the attrition stuff in a second, but the, I don't know why I have such a hard time understanding this, and I've asked you a million times, so if you don't mind explaining it to me again. Could you explain to me how our new lunch policy, what are the economics of that? Just all of it. I just get confused, the money we transferred last time, the balances, whatnot, right pocket, left pocket, all of it confuses me, and I apologize.
Oh, sure, you mean about the recent happy announcement about extending the lunch for all? Sure, so it's a separate entity governed by different, different rules. So the bank account that exists for school lunches is separate from our Board of Ed bank account, with one exception. The rules say that we're not allowed to go in the red. So that year that we went on the red, the Board of Ed is required to backfill any funds that cause us to go, that, to cover the gap when we're in the red. It's only on an annual basis, so it's not like you can treat it as like a deferred revenue. It's, it's for that given fiscal year. You start with a balance, you have expenditures, and you have revenues, and where you end at the end of the year, if you're in the red, we've got to make up that difference. So that year, it was 500,000, I believe. Last year, we ended in the black a significant amount, about 1.1 million, because all of the kids are taking advantage of the lunch, and we're getting a great reimbursement from the federal government, in addition to having smart funds, that Fairfield really benefited from their calculation, which gave us about 1.2 million of smart balance funds, or not smart, I think, it's smart, I don't know if it's balance, that's probably a food category, I'm thinking of some Weight Watchers-type thing or something, but I apologize. Smart funds. So we did receive, and we also got money reimbursed for the supply chain issues, so two rounds of that funding. As a result, we looked at the monies we took in and what it would cost to continue to have free, so smart, our smart funds will run out in, oh, I apologize, one, one last thing. The state does not allow us to keep a balance, or the federal requirements through the state, of more than three months' worth of expenses. So anything in excess of three months' worth of expenses in a given year as a cash balance, you need to submit a plan to the state to spend down. One of the allowable expenditures for that was to extend the free meals for the rest of the school year.
Okay. My concern is, and again, this is because I just don't, like, that is a very great explanation, and thank you for that, but are we going to be sitting at the table when we have, hopefully, a $2.6 million surplus at the end of the year, saying, oh, we need to take a half million dollars and throw it back into the food service account?
We're hoping we don't have a $2.6 million surplus at the end of the year, and no, no, we're projecting to have about 660,000, you know, give or take, at the end of the year with the assumptions that we have now. So that's, that's sufficient to carry us into next year, and it would be a good reserve to have.
Thank you. I can't promise I won't ask you about that again, because I don't know why.
No, it's okay, I'm glad you do. I appreciate, keeps us on our toes.
And then, if we can, can we talk about these?
Ms. Laborius, are you going to give a little kind of summary on this first, before we start asking questions?
Okay, sure. So the first is the summary document, and the second is detail. So the first one is this here, showing just a high-level picture of personnel and what I'm calling staff replacement. That's been our traditional term for what we call attrition in retirees. So what I'm doing is showing the full-time budget, the part-time budget, next to the actuals, and breaking out what the budget assumed for retirees, for attrition, then open choice, I added that because I wanted to just delineate that. In addition, the transfer to, to the, it's, that's supposed to just say special ed, professional services, transfer out, and the crossing guard transfer in. So that's our current budget, and the actuals reflect the full-time budget projected actuals, meaning the projected expenditures, part-time projected expenditures, and the actual savings from the retirees, as well as the projected attrition for the year. Below that shows a little bit more detail, so where the attrition in retirement occurred. So for example, if you look at the retirement box, you can trace back to the 1510 you see above, but it breaks out what's certified, paraprofessional, and non-certified retirement savings, and the number of FTE. So you would also ask about the average FTE, so it was close in terms of the average, we assumed, we assumed about 35,000. What was very different was the number. We were projecting, I believe, 22 in the original budget, and then we adjusted that upwards a little bit, because at the year-end, we had to modify the budget to afford some increases in health insurance, and so we ended up with 41 retirees last year. That was one of the biggest drivers. If you go to the second page, what I'm showing is a trend over time, budget, part-time, the same categories, so staff replacement. So on the top is the budget, the bottom is the actuals. And so, for example, you could look at FY '22 compared to FY '23, and see that the staff replacement was about 2.1 million in '22, and we're at about 2.5 now. So we're trending at about where we were last year and a little bit more. And then if you look lower, and I don't expect anybody to look at this right now, because you just received it, I'm just saying for future, if you want to get more information when we build into budget, you can see that, for example, certified retirees last year was about 970, which was high even then, and this year, we had about 1.4 million. Our attrition on the certified staff last year was about 768. We're at about 617 this year. We're at about 617 this year in the projection. Our enrollment hires is a summary of, it gets folded into the attrition number. That's just how we've done it in the past. But that's our October 1 enrollment changes. But it also includes a few other changes that are not enrollment-related that happened at the start of the fiscal year. I'll pause. Yeah.
Yep, Ms. Kelly, sorry. I'm sorry, did you, I don't, I'm so mad. I still can't find the original sheet that you gave us during budget season. But did you say that we budgeted around 35,000 per person? Was that?
I think it was about that. I know 780 divided by 35 is about 22, so I don't, I, I'll have to get back to you. You're, you're probably right. It was lower.
I think it was much lower.
It was much lower, because you know why? The 780, you're right. I'll have to get back to you with that.
I think it was lower, which was a big bone of contention for me because I felt like historically that wasn't.
And I remember you saying that, and, and you're right. I had the 35K in my mind.
I think it was, but.
That's the actual. No, you're correct.
Yeah. So if that, if I'm not mistaken then, so we were budgeting, I don't know what it was, something maybe less than 35. Am I doing an apples-to-apples comparison with the 47 then? On the, on the first sheet, the summary sheet, this average retirement? Is that, what is the 47, 127?
That shouldn't be a total because it's an average. I apologize, that shouldn't have drawn down. You should do a comparison to the 33K. Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. I'm just trying to get a better feel of. And then I appreciate all the numbers down here. As much as I said, I do love data, and I'm less concerned about all the detail of if it was enroll. I understand that it's important to know that it was enrollment-based and all that stuff. But at the end of the day, I just, I really just care about, we budgeted X amount per head, and it was really more like double that.
Yeah, that's why, also, I wanted to show the trend because the trend had been the average, if you exclude the COVID years, or, or the 20, sorry, 20, 20, 21, 22, was about 624K. So us budgeting 780, but I mean, that goes back to FY '16. It's kind of fluctuated over time, meaning the average total attrition.
I'm sorry, 78, oh, the 780 here, up here.
Yeah.
I got it, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. And we, we budgeted higher than that, but that was the average. I mean, again, we'll look at, we're gonna look at it very carefully because you also asked tonight to see some very preliminary budget drivers. And so one of the things that we're, I'm working with Mr. Testani and aggressively adjusting is what are our assumptions gonna be for next year? I don't mean to say aggressively adjusting, but correctly.
Okay. I understand that we're in a different work environment, like employment environment, but I'd argue that even, we need to really look at, even in a regular year, whenever we get back to that, that our assumptions are way too, I don't know if the word is conservative or aggressive, depending on what side you're looking at, but they're just not in line with what's actually happening. And that's, that's something that's a really plan to focus on, so thank you.
Yeah, and I, I did add, and just for, so that it'll build when we have our budget conversation about it, the subs earlier in the bottom, I took that off this document because I didn't want to confuse things. But in the past, part of what we did was we budgeted lower attrition because we would use that money to offset the sub costs. So this year, as we're hiring less subs, we're spending up to the budget almost with a little bit of a surplus. But before, we would overspend on this budget, just, just the, the substitute budget.
And I'm fully aware, I know that this is at some times an art, not a science. So I, I understand that there's variability there. But I also know that a lot of times when we are presenting the budget, we kind of say, well, that's in the salary line, that's contractual. There's nothing we can do about it. And that's not 100% true. There is a little bit. It's not just take our current salaries, multiply that by whatever the salary contract is. And I just think that when we talk about maybe those room places, here it is.
Yeah, the, the attrition assumption. So we take the budget at 100% and we do fully fund all the contractual increases. And then we also fund the anticipated increases in addition. And those are all, I, I like those methodologies. I do believe that we do have to revisit the attrition methodology. I agree with you.
And we'll continue those in the Finance Committee. I don't want to get too. Any other questions just about the quarterly? Okay, thank you, Ms. Laborious. You can probably stay there because our next agenda item is discussion 2023, 2024 for Public Schools Budget Initiatives and Drivers. Mr. Testani?
Yes, we have a handout that we're gonna disseminate just to give everyone something to refer to. I am getting caught up quickly on the budget process here in Fairfield. We have accumulated all the asks from each of the departments, and we began yesterday meeting with department heads to go over their asks, what the rationale and the, the asks for increases are related to. And we will then do an assessment and see what is realistic for the coming budget season and what we can maybe put off to next year. I think it's important, and Ms. Laborious mentioned before that we're trying to be fiscally responsible as we build our budget for fiscal year '24. And I think as we can make decisions earlier in the school year, as we can see surpluses building, we can utilize those funds for things that are more pointed and can be utilized to impact student achievement and, and in the classroom rather than a mad dash to spend at the end of the school year. So I think that's something that we're gonna be committed to as you will see throughout the school year.
Thank you, Mr. Testani. So this, as, as Mr. Testani said, this is not a baked, you know, budget yet. This is very, very preliminary. Mr. Testani is two weeks with us, so this reflects the departmental requests with one assumption of something that's new, which is the, you'll see on page two, under the instructional category, the, some investments in early literacy related to the state legislation. So the first page, the drivers, this is staff salaries, literally just assuming roll forward, same methodology, no change in the attrition assumptions, funding all the contracts. This is gonna get adjusted as we go through the budget process in the next month. Same thing with the benefits. The benefits, we heard today from the state, they're projecting a 9% to 12% increase on the health insurance rates, unfortunately. That said, we are gonna look at how we fund attrition in the health insurance and see if we can offset some of that with a different way to budget the health insurance. So here, I'm showing you that increase. So overall, the budget drivers, which include a transportation ask, as Mr. Isaiah pointed out, fully funding 119 buses is part of this assumption here in the transportation. You see a minor drop in the gen ed transportation, but that, you see an increase in the special education transportation. So that's just budget to budget. But this is the full 119 buses on the gen ed side and the 35 buses on the special ed side. So 3.22% is just assuming steady state, carrying forward, doing everything the same as we are. Utilities growth of 5%. We're still refining that analysis. And then relatively flat growth in pupil personnel services. We're working with Mr. Mancusi's team to refine that. But we do believe this year, we're gonna see some savings in special education related to the, being the first year in newly RFP'd services. So we're working on refining that for next year. So nursing and a few of the other support services. The instructional curriculum and IT equipment is an increase of, increase of about 2, 3 million dollars. That's 1.47% of the 4.9% ask. But it's not an ask yet because this will get refined. One of the initial meetings, Mr. Testani did identify some adjustments to the IT that we believe will still be able to, IT capital will still be able to achieve full refresh of equipment that we need and have some savings against this budget here. So again, we're in the early stages, and we, I welcome any preliminary, early questions.
Ms. Guernsey.
So I, I realize that under the instructional supplies, materials, that's preliminary. But what, what did you base that number on, the 1.8 million? Since we haven't selected the curriculum materials? Is, is that what you're talking about on, under budget drivers? Instructional supplies slash materials?
Yes, we have, we have placeholders. So when the instructional budget is built out, it was built out with a series of assumptions as of this point in time. So if you look at the page two, I'm trying to see which one crosswalks to that, instructional supplies and materials piece. 1-1807, this is 1-777. So something else is included in there. I apologize, I don't have the exact crosswalk, but 1-807, 1-777, I'm not exactly sure why. But the, the column C is a sum of all the requests that we got from the departments that were vetted by the department heads. So for example, supplies, instructional supplies and services, right now, the request not being reviewed and adjusted by the executive committee is 505,000. In addition, there's an ask for CSD, early literacy equipment, so assessments, texts, and that's 1.6 million.
Thanks so much.
Okay.
Any other questions? Ms. Raisa.
Just procedurally, would you like us to email the superintendent through you? Obviously, after having some more time to review this.
As always, if anyone has questions, just email Mr. Testani, and you can copy me.
Ms. Jacobson.
The insurance number, Mrs. Vitale, we got that from town.
The health insurance number?
Yeah.
Ms. Laborious.
Is that an Aon?
No, this is from Bernie Slowak at the state. They're giving us, but yes, Aon, we also talked with Aon about it as well. They are looking at a plan revision, so revising the plan offerings at the state level. They're gonna have updates for us in January, but that would require negotiations with the union. So I, I don't know the timing of what that would look like, but they're saying that that would be only a 2% increase. So I, I'll believe, there's some challenges there. So here, I'm showing you a 9% increase, just year-over-year budget. But a 9% increase in the rates is actually not gonna translate in a 9% increase in the budget because of the attrition assumption. So I'm just being super conservative and putting it out there just as a preliminary show to the board.
Yeah, I was actually wondering if it was high enough. So at this point, to be honest with you, not in terms of that it was too high. And the, the CSD piece, the 1.6 million dollars, is that what we are stating that that law is costing our district? Or is that something that we would be doing anyway as part of the curriculum? You know what I'm saying? I just.
Yeah, I would, I, I broke that out personally. This wasn't James breaking it out just to show that curriculum's not really going, the only, the main reason it's going up is partially because of a big investment there. But it is part of the regular curriculum refresh, so it might be disingenuous to break it out.
Okay, no, I understand. No, I mean, it's, I think that we used to in, in years past, put legislation in the front of our budget books so that we actually could track that over time every year and have an idea of what we were needing to spend because of that. Because sometimes I think the public doesn't necessarily know that every year, usually, there's something or a group of something. So I think it's helpful to understand that, actually. But.
Mrs. Jacobson, are you advocating that we have that as a page this year? Because I think that's interesting.
We used to have it. I know under Dr. Title, there was, you know, a period of time in our budget books where the man, the requirements from, any new requirements from the state would be put in there so that other town bodies or the public can understand these things are in here as new items or, or higher numbers or whatever, not necessarily because we made that happen, but because we are required to do something from the state. So I do think it's help, personally, I think it's helpful to tell a part of our story that we are continually in a state where things come down that we have to change, and those things cost money sometimes. So anyway, I just wanted to ask for, right now, for those two things at this point, but thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Raisa.
I would just echo what Ms. Jacobson said. I do have concerns about the insurance rate. We ran into this last year once again. And I think planning as conservative as we can on that and how that trickles down and affects the rest, so be. But one other thing that I was curious, we've talked in years past, and this may be to Mr. Papa George, not to bring him up to the table now. But I'm just curious if one of the things, Mr. Testani, that we'll look at, right now, our maintenance division and all of our employees and plumbers and electricians and what, are using their own vehicles. And we're reimbursing them for mileage and, and whatnot. And I wonder if, even if it's just not for this budget, but something for the future that we look at, at potentially a fleet program, like the town does for other vehicles, would that potentially cost us less and put us at less liability? God forbid something happened.
It is something that, excuse me, it is something that was mentioned in our preliminary meeting, also looking at putting some services out to bid to see if we can put it out on the marketing, receive better quality service at a, at a lower rate as well for some of our services. So he's, Mr. Papa George is gonna get full support in trying to operate his department as effectively and efficiently as possible. Thank you.
Ms. Maxicanelli.
I'm just clarifying one thing, that this 2.68 million increase for staff salaries, which is 1.29% of the total, the percent change of 2.2 is just from year, year-over-year. But I just want to clarify that that is solely contractually based. It's not an additional body, but it's also not with any type of reorganization that might be reducing bodies either. Nor is it a reflection of where the enrollment might fall in terms of how many sections we need. This is straight, if, if this year were replicated next year, the contractual increase is this.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
You know, as we, both of these last two presentations, the quarterly and these budget initiatives, I think that as we go before the Board of Finance, once again, just bring up the potential of creation of a non-lapsing account. You know, last year, in talking about the budget increase and the change in health insurance and looking at some other districts, how they were able to reduce their ask was that they had a non-lapsing account that they tapped into to kind of cover those escalated healthcare costs. Because, I mean, a lot of districts were hit by that increase. We thought it was gonna be lower when we were building our budget, and then it didn't come to fruition. So it might be worth a conversation to have with the Board of Finance moving forward, maybe outside of, you know, a specific number, but just more philosophical or best practice in theory, so it's not adversarial about, you know, a certain lump of money. Just putting it out there to Mr. Peterson and leadership. Yes, Ms. Raisa.
Just another question on transportation. Ms. Laborious, you mentioned 119 general ed and 35 special ed, but that's not the actual number of buses, correct? And, and while you're looking up that, I'm just curious, and maybe to Mr. Mancusi, as we've seen the effects and fallout from the COVID-19 pandemic, have, have you seen an increase, significant increase in the need for special ed transportation? I know that we have had some extremely long routes I know that we have had some extremely long routes and consolidated routes because of bus driver shortages and literally lack of manpower to transport these kids. So I'm just wondering, looking at this and, and just asking to make sure as we go into the budget season, that we accurately forecast as best as possible if we plan to see an increase in that need?
Good evening, Rob Mancusi, Executive Director, Special Education. The one thing I will say about special education transportation this year, more so than last, although last year was a challenge as well, by far, our biggest, and I mean by far, our biggest challenge is our, the number of buses we have available to our placements in Stanford at Villa Maria, at Spire and Pinnacle. So they've been taking a lot longer. Parents have been calling, but we've been working with, with Mr. Schneider on, on trying to come to a resolution on those.
So I guess, so is one of the things, are we budgeted, so what you're saying essence is we're, we're budgeted sufficiently, we're just not able to provide the level. So it's not that we need to increase the budget significantly, it's just we need more drivers.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, his, and to your earlier question, I, I apologize, I misspoke. The 119 buses are buses, and it's 68 of what we consider the general ed tier one, two, and three buses, and 36 budgeted special education buses, which are by the hour, seven, six, five, and four. We're running 63 general ed buses and 25 special education buses. We're able to leverage the hours differently. So although, for example, we were budgeted for eight, six-hour buses, we're running 12, which is where I'm saying, you know, our drivers are going above and beyond, but it's not gonna, it's not sustainable, to your point. They're stretched too thin and it's, it's not sustainable, but it's a way that they're making it work right now.
And just for the public to confirm, the private school transportation is still borne by the town side, correct? That's not included in our budget?
Correct, yeah. And if the public's interested in that, we do speak about that at the Board of Finance meetings, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laborious. Sorry, Ms. Gerber, go ahead.
Just to follow up on Mrs. Jacobson's comment regarding the state mandate information, I did find the link to the 1516 budget, so I could send it to you. It has a list just about recent mandates, the impact, you know, it's just a few pages, but I'll just send the link to the correct people just so you can see what they were doing.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I did that in the past. I do think it's really effective and impactful. Thank you.
Ms. Jacobson?
Sorry, Mr. Mancusi, for making you come back up. Just want to confirm that your request here for tuition and support is flat, and so you're saying that we don't anticipate any change for next year?
We're going to be reviewing our tuitions and our projections again Thursday before our budget meeting, and then you guys will have your monthly updated report of where we are currently, where we budgeted, and where we project to be at year end.
Okay, thank you. It kind of stood out a little bit there. And I just wanted to make sure that the support item that we are factoring in the 2324 new statutes that require things like additional evaluations and things like that, so we're all up to snuff on those new requirements.
We're going to be discussing that on Thursday, when we present our budget.
Can I just quick follow up?
This does not reflect all of that yet, yeah.
Ms. Peterson?
Just as a quick follow-up to that, Ms. Laborious, I asked this explicitly in Finance Committee, the, the increased funding that we gave to special ed last year to right-size the budget, the implication of this is that that so far is working. Is that correct?
That's what we believe, yeah.
Okay, all right. Just email Mr. Testani with any follow-up questions. Thank you, Ms. Laborious.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of ED 099 Authorized Signatures Change Form. This is to let Mr. Testani be the official signer of all these official documents. Let the Board of Education approve the revised ED 099 Authorized Signatures Change Form. Can I have motion? Mrs. Gerber, second by Ms. Guernsey. Any discussion? Take it to the public, any public comment? Seeing none, take the board for vote, all in favor. Motion carries 9-0. Moving on, first reading of 2023-2024 Student Calendar. Dr. Parrish. Mr. Testani, I don't know if you have any opening remarks, or if we could just give the floor to Dr. Parrish?
Yeah, we just, we sat and we looked at the calendar as we received the CES calendar. We had some discussion, we've provided you with two options that we think would best serve the district, and we're hoping that you'll take a look at both and see which one you think is more suitable for next school year.
So as Mr. Testani mentioned, this was based on the recently approved CES calendar, with our start date being proposed as August 28th and ending on June 7th, which would provide for the 182 student and 187 staff days. There are two versions of the calendar that are provided for you in the board packet. The major difference between the two in version one, it will, it actually includes two conference days in October for our pre-K, pre-K through eighth grade students and families versus in version two, there's one conference day on Election Day for grades pre-K through eight. So that's a change or a, the major difference between the two calendars. Everything else is, for the most part, identical.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, so I just wanted to get some clarity on the difference between those two. So basically, every single elementary and middle school conference would take place on Election Day in version two?
Correct, for the, for the fall conferences, yes.
We only presented that it was a suggestion made, so we considered it and, and put it out there. Yeah, it's, it's, it's an extremely long day. I, I mean, the preferable draft calendar number one is what we were originally going to propose, and then it was thrown out there, so we put it out on the table, but that's why it's draft calendar number two.
Got it. So, and I guess my, the second part of the question for that is that, yes, that does seem like a really long day. And second of all, that means that the K through eight would not have the full day professional development, obviously, because they'd be doing conferences all day. So is there some other day where just K through eight would have professional development? Or they just not have that additional day?
There wasn't an additional full day added for K through eight in this particular version of the calendar.
Ms. Teresa?
I had emailed a few weeks back, maybe a month back, and I apologize, I don't remember if this was ever answered, but one of the things I brought up was that this year, in all of the early dismissals, six of them at the elementary level fell on the same letter day. And that's a problem to me, and, and I think to a lot of staff and students at the elementary level. And I, I wonder, have we had a chance to put this, translate it to a letter day to see? And since I don't have kids in secondary, is the same thing happening at secondary?
So we haven't mapped out the letter days for, at this point, it would be all three levels in terms of the two drafts. When we originally proposed the calendar for the current school year, it was clearly not intentional for us to have a certain letter day constantly being the one that, that is subject to the early release, but it is something that we can look at. It would, it would look different for each of the, the different levels, just because they do follow three different variations of those letter days.
Yeah, and so if that hasn't been done prior to our vote, if, if that could be mapped out some way to see if there's not such a weighted situation like that, and, you know, obviously for me, it was elementary, but if we could look at, at the various levels to see if there's any impact, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, I think one of the issues that we, we talked about is a lot of the professional development half-days come before long weekends. So if it does overlap, would you want to consider moving those? I know it's convenient for families to possibly travel and get out of town for the long weekend, but I'm more than willing to put a PD in another day rather than a Friday or before a long weekend, which I think would get and keep the attention of staff a little bit better as well.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would agree with that sentiment. While I love the idea of, you know, if there's a long weekend, taking advantage of it, I never thought of the academic implication of what I've seen this past year. So I, I think it would be worth exploring.
Mrs. Max and Canelli?
I just want to follow up on Mr. Ace's point, because I completely agree. I, I, the value of a Friday PD doesn't compare. We had also always deliberately put them on Tuesdays, correct me if I'm wrong, so that we not only had the early dismissal time, but Tuesday was also the time designated as a later day anyway because of faculty meeting. And so while it wasn't a full-day PD, it was a significant chunk of time to do meaningful professional development. And that Friday in September, I don't see as being meaningful PD, bang for your buck. It, it just isn't. I also didn't understand the December 7th occurring on a Thursday, again, not taking advantage of the Tuesday. Just didn't understand that. The January 12th, I know that's something we had started as a habit, and the January 15th, again, the September was, to me, was the glaring one. And then, again, another PD, the one that's on April 3rd, once again, I don't understand its placement on the Wednesday and not the Tuesday and not taking advantage of that more significant chunk of time. So I guess I would just throw out, if, if, if we could get some, you know, feedback on why those dates were picked, but otherwise, I would be interested in shifting a few of them at least to the Tuesday.
And we can look into that as, as well. I think we might have to try to balance it with the request to avoid duplicating certain days in terms of the rotation. So that might, we might have to figure out which direction we want to go in, either moving them all to the Tuesdays, or if our preference is to avoid the duplication of the same day being impacted, that might be something that we basically, we will have to decide which one you, is your priority.
And I would just add that if this is something that we need to discuss further and deliberate, you know, prior to a vote, I mean, I know we're scheduled to vote on this on the 29th, but if that has to be delayed to, to get it right, you know, I just throw that out there, that it's not the end of the world. Unless I'm wrong, somebody tell me if I'm wrong, that we, if it's not approved on November 29th, that, you know, it's going to cause a situation.
No, we, I mean, this board remembers that we've ended up revisiting the calendar at multiple meetings and ultimately ended up approving in December, especially given the hour and some of the, the other talking points about the calendar. I'm not adverse, I can see, we can see where we are, but if we need to push the vote, we can.
So just to be clear, the priority is to make sure that we're not impacting the same letter day, that's number one. And then also, again, to, at full agreement, to pull away from those Friday PD sessions in the afternoon and try to keep them more centralized where we can get a little bit more bang for our, our time.
I would agree wherever possible, but I, I think it's, the starting point is looking at that, yes.
Ms. Jacobson, sorry.
Thank you. Two things I'm going to ask about is our start date. So Fairfield, just for new people or new families, we've always started before Labor Day. I know that's atypical from other parts of the country perhaps, but we always started on Thursday, and we had the two days, and then we had the Labor Day weekend, and then orientations were on Wednesday. So I know last year, for the first time, we started on a Monday, which, whatever, maybe. And, but we have to, but the orientation, I think, is becoming a problem in terms of that, then that's that weekend before as well. So I am looking to have a discussion around that because I think we're just creeping back up too far into August at this point, or that just could keep happening. And I just don't think we should start before that first Monday in terms of having kids required to be in our buildings. And they're not required to go to orientation, but I hate to think of that volume of kids, which is like 1,500 students or so, having to be there on Friday for orientation versus doing orientations on Monday and having our first day be Tuesday. So that's just some part of my thinking.
Okay.
Do you have a follow-up? I missed, I...
And then the other question is, I know, is there, we've talked about it before, but why do we not put a preliminary date for graduation on our calendar? And do, and a lot of do at the time that we pass our calendar, knowing that we can change that in April if we needed to?
Mrs. Max and Canelli?
I think that would, I, would be, be a very bad message to send, because then parents will freak out because they'll take that as gospel, they'll make plans accordingly, they'll make dinner reservations accordingly, and then when we move it, even though they'll have been, okay, snow day, it gets moved a day, sort of thing.
Didn't necessarily, I mean, I think that's a conversation we should have, like, why do we just not set it?
Ms. Teresa?
I, I think for the point that Ms. Max and Canelli just made, why would we set it when we know that we could have six snow days?
Because you can do it anyway.
So you're saying graduate them six days early?
Well, so obviously, the statute exists for us to be able to do that, and I'm just wondering why we as a board, like Westport does that, lots of school districts do that. Why don't we do that? I mean, is there a reason why we just don't do it? Because we don't want to commit to a day before we know after April? Is that why?
I mean, I think that, don't really have an answer for you, because we've all, you know...
But I mean, just to think about it before we vote, if there's a rational reason...
I think part of it was that, you know, school, just based on where the snow days, the high schools could be holding graduation while the lower grades are in the midst of finals, just the way the timing plays out. The middle school, you could be holding a high school graduation while middle school is still in class, and there might have been some scheduling issues. Not to put the head principals on the spot, but I see...
I just, there may be a rational reason why Fairfield doesn't do it of...
I don't know if anybody else could add any color to that, but that...
So just by the time we vote on it, it'll be something that I want to understand better.
Okay.
I can just say that I personally never picked the last day of school as graduation. In my previous district, it was always two days before, the 180, because there's always, there's more than 180 days, but would normally wait till after we were out of the inclement weather time to set the date, but it was not necessarily the last day of school. It always was a couple of days before, and then to allow kids to come back and retrieve their diplomas and everything, so things didn't have to be as orderly during the graduation ceremony.
And just to follow up to, I'll get to, I see Ms. Teresa, to your start date, I have received, and full disclosure, the initial calendar that Dr. Parrish sent did not have us starting on the Monday, and I don't think CES is starting on the Monday. And I have received multiple comments and feedback from parents asking not to start on the Monday, that it's a long week for kids, especially our elementary school students, and the point about, you know, orientation for elementary school, go meet your teacher, sixth grade, ninth grade, it does, you know, tie into the week before, and people are not taking vacations because of orientation, and it almost just, they lose another week, which really was not part of the conversation when we started on the Monday. I think we were in the midst of still a pandemic and no one was really traveling, and it was a different mindset, but I would be open to moving that date as well. And I know that Mr. Ace is probably has a comment on that.
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback to your comment. So your suggestion for talking point was just to extend it one more day to start on the Tuesday, correct? So that I could get behind, the Thursday start? No. I, I like the, I like the full week personally. Maybe my kids are an anomaly in elementary, they thrived having the, they loved being back all week. But I understand the logistics of, of that, and you brought it up last year. So yeah, so I, I could get behind that.
Then push us to the Monday for the last day, but we don't, I presume that's not going to be the last day anyway, so, I mean, just FYI.
Well, I mean, not if Mr. Testani listens to these high school students that were really, you know, advocating for a generous...
We're going to have at least one snow day, but I, I think starting the orientation on Monday and starting school on Tuesday is the best decision. I think you're going to find a lot of parents will keep them out on the Thursday, Friday, and start them on Monday anyway, which will then contribute to our chronic absenteeism.
So I wanted to thank all of the people we had in the room for speaking to us, and also all of the emails that we received from the Muslim community and their allies. It was really powerful for me to read them, and this whole process has been really educational for me, so I'm grateful for that. And I'm very interested in exploring the idea of at least recognizing the Eid holidays in our calendar. I think that's really important. I'm not sure how this is going to materialize, but I am interested in making a motion to add one of the Eid holidays as a day off for school. So I'm, I'm still thinking about how that could work, and I'd love feedback on that from Mr. Testani or from other board members. I think this is just a really important step for our district, and it's my opinion that it's the right time to do this in terms of the operational needs of the classroom and the missing students. Obviously, it's a demographic that's growing. Obviously, it's a demographic that's growing exponentially, and I really would like to have that conversation, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guernsey. Mr. Peterson.
I just to piggyback on that, I, I really do want to thank Ms. Sunila Fadil, who's still in the, in the audience, and who hosted us at the Bridgeport Islamic Community Center last week. Bonnie Rotelli and Chairman Vitale were there, it was a very nice dinner with a large selection of Muslim members of the Fairfield community. It was really, that plus the public comment tonight, I think was very eye-opening in terms of the, of the size of this community, which, you know, having grown up in this town and known only a handful of Muslim students, it really is, it's quite a, quite a change in our, in our population. I, I would be looking for a recommendation from the administration on how to proceed with that. And I, there's an, there's an aspect of this that I, I don't entirely know how to handle, which is the recognition in the calendar, which is something that Ms. Guernsey said, because our calendar is an operational document. It's not a, so I, 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 I'm not sure in that, in that regard, I would see the value of simply listing holidays for the sake of listing holidays, though I think that that could lead into work for our DEI coordinator, if there is something that we can do to, you know, at the administrative level to put together a calendar of special observations that might be, you know, of value to, you know, have other teachers and other staff know what's coming, regardless, I mean, and it could be a wide variety of things, you know, Holocaust Remembrance Day, Women's History Month. But in order, that seems to me the more proper place to recognize holidays. Now, I'm not saying that, one way or another, I, I've not quite made up my decision about the actual holiday, but I don't know that I want to use our operational document as simply a way to recognize additional days. I, I may be splitting hairs there, but...
No, I, I think we can put a calendar that, and I believe it exists on our website, that can recognize all the things that you mentioned, not necessarily days off or half days, but also just to have them recognized on the website, on a calendar is, is more than appropriate.
Ms. Guernsey.
I just wanted to offer another suggestion that I've seen many districts do, is they do have sort of a, it's, it's a separate calendar that lays next to the operational calendar, and it lists those kinds of holidays or cultural celebrations, and I think that could be really helpful to see together with the operational calendar. That might be a solution.
I would be, I like that idea, just because I think that people do go to this document, and we do have, well, we heard from the Muslim community today, there are other, as our community is becoming more diverse, there are other days that need to be recognized, and I think it would be beneficial for our, our staff that maybe you're not, it's not on their radar, to appreciate that these days are important to members of our community, and we have board policy that students, you know, can and are encouraged to take off, to celebrate these days that are special to them and their families. You know, I, I don't, this, hearing from our students really did speak to me. You know, I don't want anyone to feel marginalized because they're taking a day off from school and concerned about the work that they're missing, or missing a test, or being uncomfortable, you know, reaching out to a teacher, and I think that if, you know, if we can help just to increase, increase awareness for members of our staff that maybe don't have all of these dates on their radar, that would be something that I think that we should do in the forward and continue that conversation.
Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, so just through the chair to Mrs. Guernsey, so did you have specific dates or a date or dates that you were looking at, just in terms of where they would fit in the calendar? I'm just looking, I know there's the one that would be, I believe, April 10th, and then another one, I think it was in June, which actually might be after, I, I don't know, I, I just, I just wanted to get some clarity on that.
Yeah, so I, I was actually more interested in just the one Eid holiday on, on April 10th, Eid, oh, for, for, and, yeah, and the other, recognizing both, but, but having the day off for the April 10th.
So to be clear, I think draft calendar two has been eliminated, and we could possibly then bring forth a different draft two as an option for the next meeting.
Ms. Max and Caneli, I like draft two. Again, I, I would want to hear more, and that was, I had written it as a comment to email you later about it, was just to get some kind of color commentary on just precisely what the nature of the PD is that would be lost on the election day. But again, I mean, we, we hear from parents every year, you know, that idea of, that's a lot of days off, and again, for our working parents, the fact that we could have reduced it to just one early dismissal, I thought was fabulous. But I recognize it comes, it comes at a loss, and so if that's work that staff thought, no, we could, you know, make better use of a series of Tuesdays, then that could be absorbed, and I think that's a great use of the election day. But I would want to hear more about, you know, what's given up, but otherwise, I thought November 8th was very creative.
Well, we did, we did leave a half day on, on that calendar on October 11th for a half-day PD. We could move that to a Tuesday.
Well, no, that one's the PSAT, so I think that one we can't move.
Right, right, that was the reason why we moved it. And then we left a March 5th in there as well for a PD, so we maintained the same number of PD sessions, just split it in half rather than a full day on election day.
I am...
Same amount of time throughout the year, just split.
I think we usually had those three March early dismissals, but we also used to have three in October. So the fact that two of them have been eliminated and the work of those conference, teacher conferences has been absorbed on election day, unless I'm reading this wrong.
Yeah, so the, the three in March, two are for conferences, one's for PD, whereas before it was all conferences.
Oh, great. No, I did miss that, thank you.
I just want to follow up to Ms. Guernsey's question, just like for my idea, it was to push out a day, and then so it would be adding a day to the end of the year. Are you thinking the same thing, or are you going to be making a motion to substitute a different day off? Like cutting a day that we currently have off in substitution?
I don't have an answer for that, I'd like a recommendation. I mean, I could, I could dream up three different scenarios right now, I mean, you could probably guess what they would be. I, I don't love the idea of pushing the calendar out, but this isn't, I think, a very important day. I, I mean, we do have that Friday in February that precedes the Washington's birthday, there's that. You know, maybe that could be something that would shift. I'd like to see a full day, but, you know, I hate to even say this, but would a, a half-day PD be something that would be better than absolutely nothing? I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, there are a lot of, there's a lot to play with here, and also, there's not a lot to play with here, so, I don't have an answer, that's why I, I wouldn't make the motion now. It's something I'd love to think about, and also, I would love feedback on that, obviously.
Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, well, I, somehow I doubt that this is going to have much support, but just anecdotally, it seems that at the beginning of the school year, schools, the non-air-conditioned schools of which half our students still attend, are much hotter than they've been, and again, this is totally anecdotally, at the end of the year. So I personally, and again, no skin in the game anymore, but would actually prefer to have the school starting on the Thursday, also because I think it would be nice for our teachers to not have to go back for those two days. I mean, it would be nice for them to have that last week, you know, of vacation too. So I personally would like that, and I would also be interested in Mrs. Guernsey's suggestion. And so that would push it out to the last day of school would then be the 13th. I mean, personally, I, I, and I know we're going to have snow days, or we probably will, but the, the 7th is awfully early to be ending school. I mean, not for nothing, I mean, so, I don't know, adding those additional days, you know, even if we had snow days and we were talking six snow days, so let's just say we push it out to the 13th, we'd still be ending at the very latest if we had six snow days, which we have not had in some time, on the 21st, which isn't really any later than we've been in the past, so, just little math. And I looked at previous years, and the last day was the 12th, the 14th, the 14th, so having it end on the 7th, just a little earlier than, you know, I thought, but again, no skin in the game, but that would be my ideal calendar.
Well, just a reminder, if we get into anywhere near the 19th, we would have to close on the 19th as well.
For Juneteenth.
Wait, we don't have to close, that's, that, it is a district decision, right, correct?
I will, yep. I would, Mrs. Gerber, I would support going later in June, despite the heat. And I, that's, full disclosure, that's the mother of May, whose son would be more than happy to have just two days starting on a Thursday. In terms of the draft calendars, I do not support getting rid of the PD on election day, hearing about rolling out a new ELA curriculum. I would be very hesitant to, to get rid of that day. I think that we potentially might need it, and also, I don't know if you've talked to the police department, their feelings about having parents coming in and out of polling places on that day. That would be something else that I would, if we're, you know, going to debate these two calendars, just, we'd just want clarification from the police that, you know, they're on board with that, because it does create just more cars, people in the buildings, and if that does happen, we definitely need to have some signage, Dwight, because those that work the polling places, there were a lot of almost car crashes from people going the wrong way in the front loop. All right, so I, based on this conversation, I do not see this calendar being voted on at our next meeting. I think that we will probably have our second read at our next meeting, for those that are, are listening along, and given the time, going to end this discussion right now, please, you know, email any additional feedback to the superintendent, and we can move this forward. We have a lot still to discuss. Can I have a motion to extend the meeting to 11:30? Ms. Jacobson, second by Ms. Guernsey, all in favor? Motion carries 9-0.
Oh, Mrs. Vitale, I just want to check, just for purposes of my cleaning out, would you envision that we would, at the, on the 29th, get fresh drafts of this calendar, or do we need to hold on to this?
Fresh draft.
Okay.
All right. Moving on, discussion and action to help address potential teacher shortages. Recommend a motion, the Board of Education allow persons related to a board member to apply and be employed by the Fairfield Public Schools as substitute teachers for the 2022-2023 school year. Ms. Jacobson, second. Mr. Peterson. Thinking this before you, the board took, took similar action on this in 2000, for the 2020-2021 school year, faced with just shortages for our substitute teachers. We realized that we had family members that were qualified and looking for work. We do have a board policy that does allow family members to be employed by the school district, provided that approval is given by the board. We acted preemptively, rather than having, you know, a relative apply and then go for approval, just going to the board and getting the board's blessing through a vote to encourage any brothers, sisters, children to apply, you know, for employment in the Fairfield Public Schools. The immediate need is our substitute teachers, you know, we had, you know, things are better this year, but we're entering flu season and respiratory illness, and we're hearing a lot of people being sick, and if we can, anything we can do to help build our substitute pool, I think that we should do, which is why it's before you. If there's any questions, Ms. Kelly.
Just real quick, if this is the second time we've had to do it, has there been talk about making it a permanent change? Like why, I feel like, why do we only doing it when the emergency hits? Like, is there a reason why? Like, if it's a, something bigger that I don't understand, then so be it.
It was somewhat reactive, but that is a good point. I mean, that is something that we could potentially miss, miss, you know, if we wanted to revisit the bylaw, we have our organizational meeting at our next meeting, that's something that the, the board can revisit that bylaw and revise it. Yeah, I'm not saying that we have to do that, I'm just saying if this is the second time we've had to do it, like, I... Yeah, I mean, it's definitely worthy of conversation. Mr. Peterson.
I'm, I'm in favor of this, just as a general comment, last time, this was an issue before us, my, my daughter applied, and it took so long to onboard her that she just got another job. I think she would have been great as a, as a sub, but she was not given the opportunity because it just dragged, dragged, dragged out. So just as a general point of information, if you could make it a little faster, that'd be great.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, we'll bring to the public, any members of the public like to give comment on this. Seeing none, back to the board for a vote, all in favor? Motion carries 9-0. Okay, so tell all your fam, oh, 8, 8-0, sorry, Ms. Rotelli, I didn't see you there. Or I thought you were there and didn't realize that you weren't. I know, tell all your family, that's what I was just going to say, so spread the word to apply, and it will take bus drivers also. Okay, discussion of updated facilities planning principles. Mr. Asad, would you like to talk the board through this, being that this discussion arose in the facilities committee? We originally could have a special meeting, but I'm bringing it before you today.
Yep, so the board had kind of indicated, the feedback was that the committee, you know, start the legwork on this as a preamble to a special meeting that the board needs to have. So the facilities committee meeting, the committee met last time and went through this document from 2010 that's, that was sent to you and is before you today, and this is a red line strike version, and the three members of the committee, myself, Mrs. Vitale, and Mrs. Rotelli, went through, and also Mr. Papa George was involved with this, from the facility standpoint, went through, and basically, I'm not going to read through every single one, but I'll just point out the highlights. In the first section, you'll see that a line was added as a recommendation for just some additional things under this to consider, and the class size was relatively left alone, but just added the caveat that BOE class size guidelines for both general ed and special ed will be adhered to and possibly recommended referencing the policy and regulation on that. For specialized curriculum, we did strike through a portion of a sentence here, which seemed unnecessary, and we elaborated a little bit on some of the space with special education services and highlighting, including but not limited to OT, speech and language and student support centers. With the enrollment projections, we took out some wording that seemed outdated or unnecessary and just added something that we had talked about, especially when we got the SLAM projections, taking into consideration new dynamics, including the addition of high occupancy developments, so some of the new high occupancy buildings in town. And for stability, we took out the wording at the end where it says, whenever possible, redistricting should not be revisited every three to five years, especially without a major event, and we added, or significant population shift, which we have seen somewhat of post-COVID. One of the big notable ones that we deliberated on and are bringing forward to you as a recommendation to discuss as a full board is the idea of changing the capacity at the elementary level. Right now, we, we, we aim for 90% capacity maximum at the elementary with 85 at the secondary. The recommendation of the committee here is to, to look and, and consider bringing that down to the 85%, and some of the rationale and reasoning behind that was the increased need for specialized programs and utilizing some of the space in the buildings. So right now, you have, you know, X number of classrooms in a building, but that doesn't mean that if you have a classroom that doesn't have a section, that it's not being utilized or shouldn't be being utilized for other reasons. And that percentage, you know, we felt that we should discuss that as a board, so that was the major change in that one. With commitment to adding space where students are located, we just made some minor wording changes there. Number eight, we took out completely, because one of the goals in 2010 was to phase out temporary portable solutions, which I credit previous boards and this board for doing. So that we, the Board of Education has made a concerted effort over the last decade to get rid of the portable classrooms. Now, we took this out here, but earlier in the document, it does reference not adding. Now, we took this out here, but earlier in the document, it does reference not adding portable classrooms. So we we felt like it was okay to remove this. And then we added two, this was at the recommendation of Mr. Papa George as well. Number eight and nine are new items, commitment to providing safe and secure and healthy learning environment and sustainability. So I'm at the hour now, I'm not looking for a lot of discussion on this, but we just wanted to hope, we hope that this is a good springboard for our special meeting that we're going to have to schedule to discuss facilities and ultimately a charge on redistricting. But this, while this isn't a redistricting document, it will surely play into the idea.
I would welcome a little bit of board discussion right now that we did move it forward. I know that we want to have a special meeting, but scheduling, as we're heading into the holidays, could be a challenge. And I am putting it on this agenda just because all nine of us, Ms. Vitale, I counted you before when you weren't here, by the way, could give some initial feedback. Mr. Peterson had his hand up first, so Mr. Peterson, follow, I'm Ms. Max and Cannelly.
All right, first things first, you and I are going to have to have a conversation about commas, Nick. But to not get into into much detail, the the flipping of the the 90 to 85, I think, is going to be the the key thing that we're going to need to discuss in this. And I I don't know the degree to which that may impact reimbursement for for some things. Am I am I wrong that that some state reimbursement is based on occupancy?
Yeah, we'll we'll have to get clarification from that from Sal and Mr. Papa George, but that that was not raised in the committee meeting.
I I could be misunderstanding, but another thing that that struck me with that particular thing, and again, I'm not going to go into detail. We have a lot of buildings that we've renovated for specialized instructional spaces, and some that we haven't. But how how might that play in some some buildings might be more suitable for 90%, some maybe more suitable for 85%?
Well, one of the things I think is important to point out that our ed specs have always called for these specialized spaces and whatnot. But just because it's in the ed spec doesn't necessarily mean that it's a ideal suitable space.
No, certainly, but we but we do have schools that have been recently renovated with with, that do have those spaces, and 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 many that don't.
Yeah, and actually, and you can use one of those examples that that do have those spaces in a renovation and are actually fully utilizing a full classroom for the space because the specialized spaces just aren't even close to meeting the need, so.
Mrs. Max and Cannelly.
Just to follow up, actually, to what Mr. Peterson said, is that, you know, most of this looks excellent. Thank you for the cleanup and the modernizing of it, but that issue of the 85 versus 90, and what does that look like? And what would that drive if we could, you know, when we're ready for that conversation, if you could be ready with some hypotheticals, like, right now, it would do X, because I just, exactly what the impact of that is? And which is the more, you know, reasonable number for the, you know, best operation of the school? I'm open to the idea of moving it down. I'd just like to know, what does that look like?
And and that is, that information has been requested, and I believe Mr. Papa George and Mr. Mancusi are working on that. So that that kind of charge has been given. And again, this is, this is a hypothetical preliminary proposal to the board to discuss further. But yes, that information will be forthcoming.
Yeah, I mean, the 85% was really just appreciation of flex space and looking long term, that educate, the educational needs might change as we've just seen what's happened over the last 10 years. Mr. Mancusi, that actually was a memo from, I was going to do it for you today, just an update on suggestions for our preschool programming. That wasn't our last charge that we gave to the demographer. And we are looking, you know, at a racial imbalance plan, which did share was aggressive, has us formulating a charge, you know, early December, which is another reason why I'm, you know, did not wait for a special meeting, wanted to have these planning principles before the board because they they will play into, I think, the charge that we put forth. So need more clarification on the preschool piece, which hopefully we can get in the coming weeks. Miss, what? And additionally, for CLCs. Yes. I mean, and that's a conversation I think that we should have in terms of, do we think that we should plan for a CLC at every elementary school to be safe? And what that looks like, and that is some of the conversations we had, the Facilities Committee, kind of what that brings the capacity down to. Ms. Jacobson, follow, Ms. Rotelli.
Just a couple few thoughts, so thank you for this. The stability, I'll just give you my first off the cuff instincts on some of this. The stability piece where you took out such as school opening or closing and then added in a significant population shift, just for the workshop or when we get to that point? I just want to have a little more clarity around what would you consider, or what was your discussion in committee of what a major event might be, if not opening or closing an event? So just a little bit more of definitions of those two items in terms of what your thoughts are on that. Mr. Asa, thank you so much for drawing my attention to the fact that portable classrooms are in the headroom item because originally, when I saw portables completely struck, I found I was worried about that and us making sure that we don't lose the history of what happened here and that we maintain an item that really says, you know, we're not going to rely on portable classrooms as its own item. So I do appreciate that it's a little bit in the headroom, not sure if we might want to still make a stronger statement on that. Of course, would need to be updated from what it is today because it's outdated. Love your, like, new items, those are great. And the 85%, so be quick on that. Like, when we were originally talking about some of this, more in line with Mr. Peterson was saying, given density issues or given where there's more development issues, would it make sense to have some at different levels? But then thinking about the growth rates in terms of our special programming and just all the unknowns that are to come in the next 10 years, that it makes sense, given the growth rate in some of the other areas that we've seen, that that is easily explainable to me, like having a room for a CLC in every room or an EL, Early Literacy Academy, or whatever it may need. Obviously, things are going to come that we don't have today. And then the last one that I wanted to talk about was, I know you jumped over the number seven there, baby, a little bit quickly, the commitment to adding space. And again, happy to have that conversation about this when we get into our workshop. Just when I originally read it, you know, I was thinking about this striving the word, you know, striking a word, that is a commitment. And just for me, if I'm going to say, you know, I'm committed to something versus I'm going to strive to do it, it does signify to me a little bit of a difference and a lowering of that sentiment and some of that language. So totally happy to have the conversation about what you guys were thinking about in the meeting about that because maybe I'm just envisioning something different than what you were intending. So hoping we can have a greater conversation on that. But, you know, when I'm committed to you, I'm committed to you, and when I'm not, I'm not. So I'm just saying, you know.
Include those in the minute, that that quote needs to be in the minutes. Ms. Rotelli.
Yeah, I'm just going to add on to things that have already been said. But when we were in the meeting, especially around the 85%, I think we were all looking at what we were going to need going forward, thinking about utilizing our space and really putting the task out to Mr. Mancusi and his team. When you're thinking about preschool, when you're thinking about Early Literacy Academy, the CLCs, how we've expanded over the years, where that might look like 10 years from now, what that would look like for our buildings and making sure we have the space for all of those things. So, you know, it's all on you, Rob.
Any other comments? And while, do you want to have a special meeting, really want to move this work forward? So would just, any additional thoughts on this document, please send them to Mr. Asa directly. This will be on the Facilities Committee's next agenda. We were supposed to have a meeting tomorrow. That meeting was canceled because it conflicts with the Towns Capitol Working Group meeting, which Mr. Asa and I.
Not be on this item, but just as part of our plan that we talked about, focus redistricting possibly. And we just have never done that, and we don't have policy around that. So I don't know if you guys are going to be working on that notion too, I'm a little bit worried about that and what that might look like, even though it may be a mathematical necessity, that I just want to, we don't have policy on that. And so I don't know if that would come to policy, or if that would be something you guys would kick off and how we're going to be treating that kind of a situation. But I think we need to be more sensitive as we get closer to doing it on what that really looks like.
Yeah, I I just just to comment on that, yes, you're right, we're just not there yet. But yes, that is definitely something that we will have to discuss. And I think when we finally get a charge and we start to look at the numbers and and where the lines are and whatnot, I think we'll have to dig deeper into that as a board, and then eventually, yes, if if we are going to do something like that, there would have to be some kind of written.
And we talked when we met with SLAM Collaborative, they referenced some other districts had policy around that. So we can reach out and, you know, use that as a starting point. All right, thank you. All right, approval of minutes, the Board of Education approved the 10:25, 2022 BOE regular meeting minutes. Ms. Jacobson, second by Mrs. Gerber, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries nine zero. New new superintendent's report.
Do you want to extend the meeting beyond 11:30? Before Mr. Wakeman comes up, I just want to say thank you to all the staff and and everyone that's welcomed me over the last couple of weeks. It's been an exceptional experience. Couple of things worth noting, I'm going to echo with our student report. Mr. Martin said it was an amazing Veterans Day performance the other night over at Fairfield Ludlow High School. The kids blew me away. It was the the talent on display, and I know, Ms. Vitale, you were there as well. Ms. Guernsey, it was was amazing. I also attended earlier in the day, over at North Stratfield, of course, I think Ms. Jackson's here, an incredible performance there. The kids really had a great time and the staff and families that showed up to support them. It's good to see everyone starting to come together again and be able to celebrate all the things that are important to us as a as a Fairfield community. Two high school principals, I think, have left, but I want to thank both of them for hosting me at football games, both at Fairfield Ludlow and Fairfield Ward in the last month, introducing me to the amazing students in the student sections, warm welcome. Also, the pep rally at Fairfield Ward. And thank you to Mr. Peterson and the folks at Dwight. We had a great parent meeting a few weeks back, very productive, and I appreciate their their hospitality as well. So to that end, I will then turn it over now to Mr. Wakeman to talk a little bit about the update with Math Academy that we discussed in the last week. And hopefully, I think we found a solution that will also provide access for more students to achieve and accelerate in the math academies across the district.
So, good evening, again, Walter Wakeman, Program Director for Elementary Mathematics, Science and Enrichment. I believe you received this in the packet. Just go over briefly for the general public. We currently, this is the status update, we currently have a group of students who were identified as third graders last year enter into a accelerated math program during the summer, this past summer. They, which would basically complete their fourth grade experience in mathematics. And they are currently fourth grade students taking a fifth grade math class in their home elementary schools. So what is being brought forward is these students will be fifth graders next year and will be designated to enter into a transition to pre-algebra grade six course. This, and at last spring, there was no decision as to what that might look like. So what you have before you is being submitted for a solution to that, to address that. So the solution would be to keep these children at their home schools, their home elementary schools, with a teacher, with with a teacher who would be teaching this course. I put down that the example here is he redesignating some of the responsibilities of the math science teacher to work collaboratively with a group of teachers. And I say collaboratively with that group of teachers because all fourth grade, fifth grade, and this sixth grade class would need to be taught at the same time to allow for mobility between the classes for students. Right, so that they could all be taught at the same time. Moving forward, the, this coming spring, we would go through the identification process. We would open it up a little to provide greater access and equity for students to participate in this coming summer's accelerated Math Four program. It was very successful this past summer, so we we, there would be slight changes to it because it was really designed in the end of June last year, which many families had vacation plans. And so, and and there was a lot of logistics that we had to work through. But forward planning, it would be something that would be much more in person and would be more like the summer school in terms of the majority of, it would occur during the month of July as opposed to July and August, as it had this past year. In addition, and this would be a one-time offering for this upcoming summer, is to have an accelerated Math Five. That is, identify some grade four students who are currently fourth graders to take a Math Five course. And that is essentially completing their fifth grade year during this course of the summer. And they would join the current students who are in math, in in grade five math, these these accelerated students, when they enter into their grade six course. Now, it does get confusing, so I just have determined that the students who have previously identified, the fourth graders are in grade five math, I just call them A4 students as accelerated four, just to identify them as a group. So I put some budget implications on the back, if you'll see that. There will be some teacher resources needed to support this. There are, and these are current textbook resources that have been adopted by the district for that transition to pre-algebra course. It would just be resources that would need to be purchased for these groups of students, for this group of students, the A4 students who are taking six, as well as the the summer course teachers, the fourth grade and the fifth grade teachers. And so you see the numbers there. There will need to be additional costs for the textbooks added to this. I do not have that quote for you for this evening, but I will be getting that and be able to, and happy to forward that for the additional students who will be joining that grade six TPA course at the elementary level. So, questions?
Ms. Kelly.
Okay, normally, I'm such a Debbie Downer, so I'm promised I'm going to start with the positive here. I love that it's opening up to more, the possibility that it's opening up to more students. I think there's definitely more students who are capable, who are being overlooked, regardless of gender, regardless of test scores. I think we're missing a huge chunk of aptitude, and I I love the idea of more children, more students being involved. The biggest concern that I have is when we originally started talking about, well, I wasn't on the board when this first happened, but in following it and in subsequent conversations, when we were talking about trying to get something similar to the Math Academy in the individual schools, I believe we were told it would be prohibitive in cost because of all of the human resources that would be needed to teach those classes. Now, I don't see that even as a budget item. Yes, there was, you know, you mentioned, like, re-designating some responsibilities, but that seems, we're talking more kids now with the same amount of staff, which two years ago, we were told was prohibitive. That is a disconnect for me. I don't understand it. It's wonderful if it can be accomplished, but I'm just not connecting the dots there. If I could just, I just can't, I just can't make sense of it. I understand that you would offer the one-time summer program or for the, for people who weren't identified this year, so they they do have an opportunity to catch up. And I I agree with that. I do think that we're going to, but you said that's a one-year only. So I guess my question would be, for the students who are identified this year to go in, after that, we're not giving anybody. go in, after that, we're not giving anybody also an on-ramp in after the first year?
The recommendation at this time is these, there already is a subgroup that did not take us up on this opportunity for this past summer. And again, I don't know how much of that was because of vacation plans and the commitments. It really was a last-minute build. So there is a pool of those students, as well as there may be some, as well as other students that may be able to take advantage of this with a little more advanced notice. And so entering the course sequence in grade four, excuse me, exiting grade three, right, going in fourth grade, the A4 situation. Right. So that providing that opportunity for those students would have them, give them the two years more experience at the elementary level. In other words, the grade, the kids who are fourth graders now, the number of students have yet to be identified going into fifth grade. So I'm anticipating, because of opening the gates a little bit, that we will have those numbers. And we also have an idea from some students who didn't take advantage of this. But moving forward, if we have opened the gate in third grade, whether we would have additional students to enter into the grade five?
Right. I was just wondering if it would be open in the future. Like, so if you, if you're identified in third, if you're not identified in third grade, but by the middle or end of fourth grade, there's a consensus from your math teacher or whoever it may be, that they can still do it. If we're not, if we're only going to offer this accelerated fifth grade math one time to catch up for the, for the year. I'm just saying, like, it's third grade or bust, or?
So I'm glad you brought that up. This is an alternative pathway. This pathway already exists and existed prior to Math Academy. Right. So any child has an option, or has the possibility, they need to qualify, of course, but it has the possibility in fifth grade to enter into this sequence of courses that these four A students are, the track, the sequence of courses that these four A students are on already.
Okay. And I don't want to lie and say lastly, but right now, I think lastly, I understand the sixth graders being, they would be, or the A4s who would be taking sixth grade math, sorry, we're all going to say different things, they would be in their own class. The fourth graders would be taking classes with the fifth graders, which they're currently doing. But that's based on what I presume are smaller numbers, which we already had run into class size issues. If we are opening up this more, do you anticipate having a class solely of fourth graders taking fifth grade math? Or do you still plan on integrating them into a fifth grade classroom?
At this point, it would more than likely be integrated into the, those fourth grade students would be integrated into fifth grade math classes. The other thing to consider is that there would be fifth graders who would be going into grade six classes. So as you're putting more students into the fifth grade, you're also taking some students out of the fifth grade, going to six. The caveat here, what I don't know or can't predict, is are they in the same schools and are they in the same classes? Right. And again, this is solely for the math class. It is not for the entire school day, for any students who have participated.
And then the teacher who would be teaching the sixth grade. I'm sorry, did you have a follow? Oh, sorry.
I just, we have five minutes left of this meeting, so I.
I know, but this is kind of important, and I hate to just not, to just, I understand, and we've talked about a lot of stuff, but like, we can't, I don't know. I know.
And I am in no way saying that it's not important. I'm just wanting to acknowledge that we have, my bad for not extending it until longer, but it's based on past, you know, feedback from the board and not wanting to extend past 11.
Then can we make a motion to have, put this back on the agenda for the next time?
Do you need any particular action or comment from us right now? Just an update. We can, we can have a follow-up on a, you know, a later agenda item.
Can I make a suggestion if we ask if there's going to be anyone wanting to do public comment? Because if so, we, I think we need to extend a bit. If someone has waited this long, then we're not going to make 11:30. Otherwise, we may just have to cut ourselves off. But that's the one part I would feel badly about someone waiting this long.
I agree. So just on this topic, Mr. Wakeman, board members, follow-up questions on this to please send it to Mr. Testane. We can add it to agenda. Thank you for.
Thank you.
For hanging out with us so late. And any members of the public right now, like?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make a comment because it's related to timeline in this discussion. One of my concerns with this is that when we offer summer programs in the spring, it doesn't allow for planning. So if we push this discussion later, I just want to make sure we're allowing for the idea that students would find out they're invited to do these programs in better time. So that's.
We can add to, like, you know, the next agenda or, you know, within the next month.
It feels time-sensitive to me. Thank you.
Any members of the public like to give comment?
We're not going to be able to do everything in five minutes. I am not against extending, but I was told that we only extend, and I'm sorry for not extending to midnight or making a motion to extend later. Typically, we only extend once. I mean, if the board wants to.
I think this update that remains is really important.
Forgo our bylaws, we can have, would you like to make a motion to, to extend our meeting further?
I'd make a motion to extend to 11:40, but I don't believe that's, if it's in violation of our bylaws, then I don't. But I don't believe this is in violation of our bylaws.
I just recall in the past that there had been issues with not being able to extend more than once. I just looked up in my Robert's Rules books. I couldn't find it. I'm really tired. I'm not seeing clearly. Maybe I'm missing it. I will look later. In the past, we haven't done it. But if that's what this board wants to do, then they can do it.
Can we extend to quarter two, 11:45? unanimous consent, just to extend 11:45? All right. Just being that it's late, we will get to this update, but I want to just, for members of the public, just to make sure that they have been heard. So any members of the public, invite you to come forward. We're going to stick with two minutes, being that that's what we used earlier in the meeting, just to keep it consistent.
I'll be very fast. Thank you. David Krosnoff here, 155 Burr Street. Just want to address the facilities, planning principles. First off, thank you so much for thinking forward and looking long-term. There's a lot of these changes here that are really good, especially the 85%. I think it's important to have headspace for things that are going to come in the future. Sustainability, I think is huge, and I'm really glad that it made it onto the sheet. The one concern I have is the word strive. I see it a lot of times in this paperwork. And as Ms. Jacobson said, to me, strive is not something you put on a principle for future board events to reference. I understand you guys all may understand what strive means, but someone else sitting in that seat may take strive a totally different direction. Thank you.
I'll go quickly. Katie Flynn, 204 Grandview Road. I just wanted to speak to two items. In terms of the calendar, I would implore the board, as we heard from several members, to consider all the schools that are open in August. I can tell you, I had three elementary schoolers at North Stratfield, and it was a brutal first week of school for our staff, for our students. So to look at it holistically. And just quickly, on the planning principles, to me, changing the language from must be striving to maintain neighborhood schools could fundamentally change the Fairfield Public Schools neighborhood school model in a dramatic and noticeable way, considering recent conversations about school closures and the past history in this community of closing schools and very quickly needing them back online at a tremendous cost to the community. I would implore the board to examine this word choice, this word choice, both for the current and future conversations. Thank you.
Hi, Sean Hood, 420 Lally Boulevard. I am coming here today just to say thank you to Jen Jacobson. She came to a PTA meeting for Roger Sherman last week, and I think she might speak to you guys as well. But how difficult it is for some parents to hear about redistricting, how especially this cohort of parents like myself, who had kind of had their school year delayed, and now we're talking about those same kindergartners who have kind of their school years changed come fifth grade, come middle school. I know you guys have your hands tied a bit when it comes to the timeline of your redistricting. But I just want to implore you to consider this particular class and timeline for these students and how they're going to be impacted. It's been a challenging year for a third grader right now. If you think about it, they haven't had a full normal year ever. This is going to be their first unmasked, you know, field trip positive year, and that's going to get them kind of going. And then we're going to be talking about redistricting pretty quickly thereafter. So I just want to keep that a consideration and also let you guys know, as a parent that's out here trying to get people to listen, I would really ask that you push PTAs and push parent nights, even if they're not part of your PTAs, to get in the building to let parents know that this is happening. Because the amount of people who don't realizing this is happening or don't feel like it's happening is kind of reflective of how many people are here at 11:30, right? There's probably 10 of us where their entire year, there is probably 40, 50 of you. So, you know, communicate the best way you can and leverage your PTA and principles to get the word out about what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Testane, back to you.
I'm going to call up James to speak to what was done on Election Day in reference to the Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry curriculum, and where we're at today and where we expect to go moving forward as we address the concerns that were raised around the map.
Thank you. I know some of you have, or I believe all of you have received an update on this already, so I'll be quick in the summary. On Election Day, the secondary math department, so middle school and high school, met to create and devise a scope and sequence for the Algebra Geometry, Algebra II sequence, with what are the common expectations and common experiences for a typical Algebra Geometry and Algebra II course. That was completed that day, along with beginning to resource those units that were, the skeletons of those units that were created. Following that, the plan for the duration of the year in the winter and the spring is to draft the curriculum documents to bring for proposal in the future, which would be in the late spring or early summer, I guess, if it were in June.
And just to piggyback on that, before you ask your question, is we are going to reconvene the group in the next week or two. I do have some questions as well and some concerns to raise as we move forward, because I want to make sure that we get this right. And we're not back here six months from now, having this discussion again, because there was not a complete consensus amongst the staff on where we should go and what resources to utilize. So I think there are some outstanding questions, given the survey results that we all received, that I have at least.
Mrs. Maxine Canelli.
So just from my understanding, there was an email this afternoon explaining what you just said. I saw the survey. I didn't see any other email.
Yes.
Okay, so I didn't get a chance. So I apologize if what I'm about to ask was covered in that. I just didn't see it. But what I have been clear, and again, I, number one, I want to thank the staff and, for, excuse me, I want to thank the leadership for committing that full November 8th day, because I can only imagine all the things that could be done with a full day of professional development and that, that this was done and that this was followed through. I just appreciate the leadership that was given to this really, really important issue and not sidestepping and not trying to give it a half day. I sincerely appreciate that. But just to be clear, what curriculum are we now following? And again, this is what, if it's in the email, I'm not aware of it.
That is not in the email. The teachers are following the curriculum that has been board-approved at this point. We, so the one that was approved last year in January, which would have illustrative math while they were planning this, and on November 8th, we did survey also on where they were in terms of the pace, and there are some variations with that. But they are currently implementing the curriculum as approved until further notice.
And that's the part that I'm very uncomfortable with, because again, besides that initially, and again, I keep referencing statistics because the only one I've heard mentioned by staff, which was a shift from Algebra II to Algebra I. And that was one, but did, I guess that's what I'm still unclear on. Obviously, if that's the curriculum we're following, but because I have been advocating several times that we need a new curriculum vote of the board so that staff is consistent with the notion that we, we tell parents, you don't have to worry about teachers. All of them are following the board-approved curriculum. But my understanding was that the board-approved curriculum was problematic in addition to the resource and the instructional method that it dictated, and that therefore there was kind of a sense of, please, may math be charged with, make sure these kids have that foundation that they need in all of these subjects. The fact that what was asked of them in Geometry and Algebra II, the Algebra I they had did not prepare them for that because this wasn't quite sequential or aligned. So I guess that's a long-winded way of saying, I don't understand how we're still doing the illustrative math curriculum, given the flaws that I believe were inherent in it.
They, they have included other resources to teach the topics that are currently in it. That was part of the planning on the 8th as well. I did not feel comfortable simply saying, don't follow a board-approved document, which is a curriculum document that is approved and wait for further guidance. The scope and sequence and the documents they came up with on the 8th are in the process and ready to go. We don't want a dramatic stop, right, to say, tomorrow, we're going to end it and we're going to start over. There needs to be natural breaks there. The curriculum that they are creating is more closely aligned with the pre-2021 adopted documents.
And so that would be for 2023, 24? Or would that be literally making on the fly what they're going to do for this school year?
The one they created on the 8th, the full documents for approval will be for 23, 24. However, they are ready to go to make sure that students have the Algebra Geometry, Algebra II experience this year with what they've devised. The math department's ready.
I somehow feel like I'm not quite getting my answer.
So, I mean, we're right.
And I know it's complicated, by the way. I know it's messy.
I think that we're somewhat at a crossroads, because we're one marking period in, started with one curriculum. We've gotten feedback to kind of revert back to the other curriculum, but we're not starting on day one with the old curriculum. So what exactly, where are teachers? And that is part of the reason why I did not put it on for a vote for this meeting. I wanted the board to have the survey results back, which were not completed last week. Also, wanted to give our new superintendent some more time to do this work. And also, when we take a vote, want to make sure that it's very clear on what exactly we are voting on, so we're not, you know, three weeks later saying, what's going on again? Very much hear you, hear feedback from the board, also cognizant of the agenda that we had before us tonight. Timeline in terms of, we want, the board wants to give staff direction and support and teachers, you know, the backup to know that what they are doing in the classroom, the board event is behind them. So I am going to defer to you, Mr. Testane, just in Dr. Zevan's, in terms of a timeline for when you would like that action to be taken.
Just to back up on one piece here. So there is a unit, the statistics unit that's been done. The teachers have planned for this year as well of what possibly has been missed, of what they're going to catch up with in other courses for this current cohort beyond the implementation of 23, 24, when it's ready to go. I believe they are ready to go whenever this board has decided to vote on the direction to revert back.
Go ahead, Ms. Jacobson.
So without getting into the complicated nuance, which I know it's very detailed, I just want you to speak to how we are addressing the different levels. Eighth grade honors algebra, because from my understanding, and a lot of the feedback in that survey was, how is this going to meet honors-level students' needs?
Thank you for the question. That is something I left out in the discussion. Within the scope and sequence plan, the teachers have also identified those content topics, skill topics, and I'll call them thinking topics, that would differentiate the honors course from the college prep course. You mentioned algebra, including. You mentioned algebra, including honors algebra and college prep algebra.
Sure they're ready for the next sciences and maths that come much later in terms of what's happening now, that they're not missing that, so thank you.
They are working on that as well, and it will be part of the plan in the spring too, the winter and spring.
So to be clear, what would be before the board would basically be the previous curriculum documents, and that's what we would be taking action on?
Yes.
No, I understand, but if we already know that, that's where I don't understand why we're not voting on it.
I'm happy to vote on it for the record.
What?
I don't know what we're waiting for. I all read those survey results. I really don't know what we're waiting for. I don't know where teachers are starting, I mean, you're saying that there are different paces in their pacing, so I'm unclear on, you know, where they're going to pick up. We're going to have that same problem in a week, or two weeks, or three weeks, so we're just kicking the can down the road.
The only thing I care about for this is that our not-voting holds them up. And in theory, it should be. They should be following that illustrative math, pre-programmed curriculum until we give them the green light to do otherwise. That's my, look, it's, to me, the vote is a formality, but it's an important one, and I just want them to have the green light to do their job as they know best how to do. That's my only thing. I accept what you said, Ms. Vitale, that it's a lot confusing.
We wouldn't, I wouldn't expect them to essentially stop what they're doing in the middle. There does have to be a natural break and a pickup of what they've planned on November 8th with the units moving forward for the rest of the year.
Given there's minutes left in this meeting, would the board be amenable to a virtual meeting just to have the vote? Within, you know, try to plan it within the next week, just to have the vote on the curriculum, not to reconvene everybody, just to give the blessing and not make action at the very last minute of this meeting. And then if there's anything else, you know, in, you know, that comes up after a good night's sleep, to move it forward, just so we do a little bit of due diligence. All right. Any committee leaders on reports that need to be given? You can email them. I'm also, November is Native American Heritage Month. I'm not going to read this, maybe I'll read it at the next meeting, but I just wanted to recognize that I forgot to read it at the beginning of the meeting. You can just not reply.
I believe our bylaws allow for written, written reports from committees.
Any open board comment? Happy Thanksgiving, but we're going to be meeting virtually before that. And congratulations on your first meeting.
Thank you. Oh, awesome.
All right, motion to adjourn.
I do want to say one thing, because she had left the room. I want to thank Meg Brown, because she has made the transition for me incredibly easy, and I appreciate all her hard work, and she should be recognized.
And just open board comment, our next meeting, we're having, before our regular board meeting, we were going to be having our organizational meeting. There'll be voting for change of officers. Also, we review any bylaws changes, so just putting it out to the board, if anybody has any potential bylaws they would like to bring forward, we don't need to take action at the next meeting, but it could be just move forward for discussion. Motion to adjourn. Ms. Jacobson, second by Ms. Rotelli, all in favor, motion carries nine zero.